Welcome, everybody. We will go ahead and get our meeting started. Welcome to our regular meeting of Monday, July 11th. We will begin with roll call, please.
Okay, and we do have Councilmember Johnson participating remotely. On the roll call, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Halter.
Here.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Here.
And Mayor Rubicalva.
Here. And we will continue with the pledge of allegiance, and we will ask Councilmember Halter to lead us in the pledge.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. Will you please all stand and put your right hand over your heart? Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And today, we have a special presentation. A presentation of public opinion poll results from Dr. Timothy McLarnie of True North Research.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll tee this up for Dr. McLarnie. Tonight, you'll see a presentation from Dr. Timothy McLarnie of True North Research. The presentation highlights the results of the city's 2022 community opinion survey. Dr. McLarnie has over 25 years of experience in research methodology and led over 1,200 research studies for public agencies in California and across the nation. Public agencies regularly use community surveys as a needs assessment and performance measurement tool. As part of best practices, these types of surveys are conducted every two to three years. This is the first survey in the city's bi-annual commitment to this process. The last community opinion survey that the city conducted was in 2009 slash 2010 and was also performed by True North Research. Tonight's presentation will explore the recent findings and responses that gauge perceptions of quality of life in Ventura for our residents. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. McLarnie. And we also have our Public Information Officer Heather Sumagai Sai via remote as well. So, Dr. McLarnie, take it away.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tim McLarnie with True North Research. And I just shared my screen with you, so hopefully it's showing up on your end. Maybe I can get a nod or some indication of that's happening.
Yes, I'm good here.
Excellent. So, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. And what I have done tonight for presentation is put together a PowerPoint which covers the highlights of the survey that we conducted for the city. There's a much more detailed report for those who are interested. If you like to dig in and look at the details and look at how the results I'll share with you tonight, compare across different subgroups of your residents, et cetera, that report would be a good reference for that. And as I go through tonight's presentation, I welcome questions from council as I go or at the end, whichever is your preference, Mayor. So with that, I'll go ahead and jump in. You know, before we talk about the actual results, it's helpful to take a moment to review the purpose of the study or why cities go about doing this type of research, as well as the methodology or how we went about conducting the research. In terms of the purpose of the study, I see these community surveys of this particular type really addressing sort of three things. There's sort of one part community needs assessment. So what are your residents' priorities and preferences and needs with respect to the services, facilities that you provide as a public agency? There are also one part performance management. So how well are you performing as a city in meeting residents' needs? Where are you exceeding their expectations? Where are you meeting their expectations? Where might there be some room for improvement? And there are also one part planning. So oftentimes, and you'll see a little bit of this in this survey as well, cities use these tools to help them make important decisions when they're planning their future. And there are a number of questions in here that sort of relate to the city's general plan update. In terms of the methodology or how we went about conducting the study, it was conducted in late April, early May of this year, and we use what's called a mixed methodology approach. You know, I've been around the survey industry for over 20 years. I remember there was this period of time that was what I would call the golden age of the telephone interview, where everyone had a landline, nobody had caller ID, and when the phone rang, you actually had to pick it up to answer it and ask who was, to figure out who was on the other end of that line. And when you did that, we had a really good chance of completing an interview with you. Obviously, a lot has changed in terms of access to phones and phone technology. We have mobile, people are used to using and communicating online, being text, et cetera. And so we have just evolved our methodologies over time to account for that. And so today, the state of the art is to use multiple recruiting methods. In this case, we used email invitations, we used text invitations, and we also reached out by telephone. So we had three different ways of reaching somebody once they had been selected for our sample. They also had two different ways of participating in the survey. They could participate online at a protected website. All of the links that we sent out via email or text had an embedded link in there so that we knew when somebody clicked that, it ensured that only people that we invited to take the survey could participate, and they could only take it one time. And we also translated the survey into English and Spanish. Now, we had actually set out and had a goal of completing 600 interviews among adult Ventura residents who were selected using what's called stratified random sampling. And I can get into details of that if you like, but suffice it to say, what it allows us to do is ensure that at the end of this process, we have a sample that's in fact representative of your adult population on all the key demographics that we want to track. We'd set out to do 600. You always have to do some estimation about what the response rate's going to be. We tend to be a little conservative, but in this case, we walked back in the door with 1,070 completes. So the participation rate among your residents when given the opportunity to share their opinions in this poll was higher than what I originally expected, and that's great. What that means is that with more sample, we have a greater degree of reliability for the survey. In this case, the margin of variability of sampling is plus or minus 3%. What that means is we can be 95% confident that the results we'll talk about here this evening are within 3% of what we would have found had we spoken with all of your adult residents. So with that, let me go ahead and jump into the results. So this first slide shows the results of our kind of opening question in the survey where we asked respondents to rate the city of Ventura on a number of different dimensions. So overall quality of life, as a place to recreate, as a place to shop and dine, et cetera. And you can see here that Ventura gets some strong marks on most of these dimensions. 81% rated the overall quality of life in Ventura as excellent or good. You had 70%, sorry, 73% who rated Ventura as a place to recreate as excellent or good, and 69% respectively for as a place to shop and dine and as a place to raise a family. I can tell you that the shop and dine dimension is one of the interesting ones that varies quite a bit city to city. Sometimes cities get good marks like what yours are, and then sometimes we see that, you know, in certain communities that there's a real appetite for more restaurants and more retail shopping. And so your numbers are solid there. And then finally, you had about 53% who rated Ventura as excellent or good as a place to work. So after that opening question, we asked individuals, if the city government could change one thing to make Ventura a better place to live now and in the future, what change would you like to see? This question was posed in an open-ended manner, meaning we didn't provide them with the list of options that you see here on the slide. We simply let them tell us in their own words what they felt that the city government could change to improve the quality of life in the city. And we went back in and looked at those verbatim responses and grouped them into the categories that you see here. And so you see at the top of the list, the most common mention was addressing homelessness. You had 26% of respondents rate that as the one thing they'd like to see the city government change to make the community a better place to live, followed by providing more affordable housing at 16%. Limiting growth and preserving open space and farmland, about 15%. And then mentions of improving or maintaining roads at 12% and improving public safety at about 11%. So after that, we turn to what in some ways could be considered one of the more important questions in the survey, and the results of which are shown here. And the question is generally speaking, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the city is, Ventura is doing to provide city services? Because we're asking them to comment on the city's performance overall and in general, we're not referencing a specific service area at this point, it can be considered an overall performance rating for the city. And what you see here is you have 2/3 of residents, 67%, who said that they were satisfied with the city's overall performance. You had about 28% who were dissatisfied and the remainder being unsure. When you go behind this and you unpack this, these answers by various demographics in the community, so how long they've lived in the city, presence of children in the home, age, gender, those types of things, what you find is absolutely, the results are quite consistent. There's a couple of groups that do stand out as being a little higher in terms of their overall satisfaction, and those were newer residents, those who hadn't lived in the community for much time, Asians, as well as males. So this slide shows the answers to that overall performance rating question. After that, we go into and essentially asking the same basic question, but for 22 different specific service areas that are handled by the city. So the various services you see here on the slide, we simply asked them to tell us how satisfied they are with the city's efforts to provide those services. These were asked in a random order to avoid a systematic position order bias, but we've sorted them from high to low in this slide based on that combined percentage of folks that said they were satisfied. And you can see at the top of the list, you've got quite a few services here that get very high marks. Providing fire protection, emergency medical services, 87% indicated that they were satisfied with the city's efforts in that area. Providing trash, recycling, and household hazardous waste services at 86%. 83% for holding special events like parades and holiday celebrations, and then on down, police services, recreation, et cetera. For most of the services you see, there are all but four of them. You've got majority of your residents saying that they're satisfied with the city's efforts to provide the service. Towards the bottom, you see a couple that don't have that level of satisfaction. The one at the very bottom there is addressing homelessness. This kind of lines up with what we saw earlier. When we asked folks if there's one thing they would change to make the city a better place to live, they mentioned homelessness. When you specifically call out that issue among all the other 22 issues, it's the one that has the lowest levels of satisfaction, so that kind of makes sense. We also see about 28% said they were satisfied with the city's efforts to facilitate the development of affordable housing, and then streets and roads came in at about 41%. So shifting gears here, we went on to ask individuals just a blanket question where we asked them, how safe is the city of Ventura as a place to live? Would they say it's very safe, somewhat safe, somewhat unsafe, or very unsafe? Overall, you can see the vast majority of residents think Ventura is a safe place to live. You had 82% indicated that it is safe. For those individuals who thought it was unsafe, we went on to ask them a question about, is there a particular type of crime activity or issue that you feel, that you feel is making the city unsafe? And here again, they got to tell us in their own words what it is that they had in mind that they felt was making the city unsafe. We went back and looked at the responses and grouped them in the categories you see here. And again, that issue of homelessness sort of rises to the top of the list. When folks were saying that they don't feel that the city is very safe or somewhat safe, most of the time, they're referencing something to do with homelessness or vagrancy within the city. Continuing on the sort of public safety theme, we went on to ask respondents, how prepared would they say their household is to be self-sufficient in the event of a natural disaster or other citywide emergency? And you can see here that about 54%, a little over half, feel like they're either well-prepared or somewhat prepared. About 29% said they were slightly prepared, and about 16% were either not at all prepared or not sure. I found the results here in Ventura interesting because they're a little lower in terms of the percentage of folks who said that they were either well-prepared or somewhat prepared than I would have expected. However, I also think they're more accurate. What we tend to find when we've asked this question in some other cities is sometimes people have a kind of a rosy idea of how prepared they are for a natural disaster, in part because they've never been through one, and they don't realize how, you know, how they don't have many of the supplies and plans that they would need to have in place to be self-sufficient. Because Ventura has gone through, you know, devastating fire in recent years, I think your residents are probably a little more accurate in sort of assessing their own level of self-preparedness. Okay, so shifting gears. Ventura, like all cities, has a limited budget and probably a seemingly unlimited list of things that you could spend that budget on. You have to make tough decisions and set priorities. And so we took the opportunity in the survey to get an understanding of how your residents might prioritize future city funds across each of the items you see here on this slide. And to recognizing that all of these things tend to be things that residents would like, and we wouldn't do us much good to have everything come back as a high priority, we asked them to rate the priority for each one of these items, keeping in mind that not all the items can be high priority. So we forced them, sort of a sense of competition into this question, so that they would prioritize. At the top of the list, you can see here, once again, addressing homelessness. That was the number one issue, with 92% rating it as either a high or medium priority. You also had 87% mention improving the maintenance and paving of city streets as a high or medium priority, and then followed by improving fire protection and prevention services. And again, I want to emphasize this, isn't that the things lower on this list here aren't things that your residents care about? They certainly do. Again, though, the nature of the question sort of forces them to pick their top priorities as they're going through the list. So as we saw on that last slide, improving fire protection prevention services was among the top three things that residents prioritize for future city funding. And so we went on in the space of the survey to get an understanding of perhaps how willing your residents would be to increase taxes in order to fund improvements in fire protection and EMS. And so the nature of the question was, in order to provide funding to improve fire protection, prevention, and emergency medical services in the city of Ventura, including improving 911 response times, increasing the number of firefighters and paramedics, repairing and replacing lifesaving equipment and vehicles and fixing older fire stations, would you support or oppose $100 per year tax increase? This was not worded as, you know, an exact 75-word legally compliant ballot statement that you would be able to put on the ballot in November. It doesn't specify the exact taxing mechanism, and so that's why I kind of call it a finger in the wind, just the concept of, you know, willingness to impose $100 tax in order to improve fire protection and prevention services. And so what you see here on the slide is you have majority support for that, 52%, with 38% opposed and the rest unsure. Because in this scenario, these funds would be earmarked for fire protection and prevention. They're what's considered a special tax under California law, and so they would actually require 2/3. So the support level's coming in significantly below the 2/3 mark, but is found among a majority of your voters. I mentioned at the outset that part of the survey was designed to kind of inform your planning efforts and to help inform the general plan. We wanted to get a sense from residents of the types of, sort of how they view the community and whether there's, what, sort of how they assess the amount of each of the sort of business types or land uses or amenities that you see there on the left side of the slide. And so for each of those, we simply asked them to tell us whether they think there's currently too much of this in Ventura, not enough, or about the right amount. And we've sorted them here from high to low based on the percentage of folks who said there's too little of this. And so you see at the top of the list, there's sort of three items that the majority And so you see at the top of the list, there's sort of three items that the majority of residents of Ventura feel like there's not enough of in the city, and that is affordable housing for middle-income families, 70% said there's not enough of this. You had 60% say there's not enough affordable housing for low-income families, and you had 55% say that there's not enough good-paying jobs and employment opportunities in the city. Every one of the other items on that list, the dominant answer is that it's about right, right, that you have the right amount. That said, when you get to the very bottom there, there are a couple of items where among those with, who see that there's either, you know, that the, the amount is not right, it tends to lean that we have too much of this already as opposed to too little, and that's big box resale stores and commercial offices. As you may know, the state of California has imposed a number of new laws as they relate to housing and, and development, and we wanted to get a sense of whether residents were aware of some of these changes. And so we simply asked them prior to taking the survey, were you aware that according to California law, each of those items that you see there left on the slide, so for example, the city must allow up to four units in single-family residential lots in certain cases, simply whether they are aware of that rule or not? As you can see here, fairly low awareness among your residents of these new state laws as they pertain to, to housing, ranging anywhere from a high of about 30% being aware of, you know, in some cases allowing four units on a single-family residential property, down to just 15% for the fact that the city can't deny housing projects due to lack of water resources or drought. Shifting gears here, again, we asked individuals to rate the city's performance on each of the items that you see here on the slide, and just tell us how good of a job you think the city's doing in each respect. Overall, the city got the best marks for providing access to information, as well as engaging with residents to get their feedback, followed by being responsive to residents and businesses and working through critical issues facing the community. When compared to the other issues tested, the numbers were a bit softer for spending tax dollars wisely and managing development and effectively planning for the future. In this, not every resident that we spoke with had had contact with city staff in the past year, but about a third, 34%, indicated they had interacted with city staff at least once during that timeframe. For those individuals who interacted with city staff, we went on to ask them to rate staff in terms of their professionalism, their accessibility and their helpfulness. And as you can see here, staff got high marks across the board. 90% of respondents rated staff as professional, 83% as accessible, and 80% as helpful. Now, one of the areas that, it's interesting, as I've been, you know, I've been doing this for 20 years, and over the last 10 years, so I get to work with a lot of cities and see how these, you know, responses to these types of surveys change over time. One of the areas that all public agencies and, and cities have really struggled with over the last 10 years is communication. Even among cities that are very high-performing in every respect, we've watched kind of the, the satisfaction scores with city resident communication sort of drift down over time. This is, I think, due to a couple of factors. One is just the fact that the way in which people receive and communicate, receive information and, and the sources they turn to have changed so much. It used to be that, you know, residents watched the same TV shows, they read the same newspapers, you know, they would, you know, check their mail and read the same newsletters when they came in, listen to the same radio programs, and so from a public agency to communicate with them, there were only a handful of channels to choose from, and if they, if they made good use of those, they would have very good penetration. Obviously, that's changed a lot. You have thousands now of different information sources that are out there. Pretty much everybody's turning to different combination of those, and so it's hard to be in all these different places at all times, and residents are just harder to reach because of that. The other thing I think that's happened is people's expectations for the timeliness and type of information they receive have gone up quite a bit in the last 10 years as well. And so, you know, I mentioned this because, you know, against this backdrop where it's been a moving target, it's continuing to be a moving target, and public agencies have really had a difficult time trying to keep their communication scores up. You've got solid communication scores here. You have 62% of residents who said that they were satisfied with the city's efforts to communicate with them, about 25% dissatisfied, and the rest unsure. I also understand that it's only been in the last, I think, two years that the city has had, decided to centralize its communications and bring on a dedicated team for, for doing that there at the city. And so it's going to be interesting to see where this number is the next two years from now when you, when you do it, because I have a feeling that this is, this is, you know, a number on the move. And so continuing with the communication theme, we did ask individuals what information sources they use to find out about city of Ventura news, information, programming, and events. This is multiple choice, they could choose among a number of different ones. And at the very top of the list there, 33% mentioned social media like Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. That was the number one source for information about news and events in Ventura. 27% mentioned the Ventura County Star, and then you had about 24% who mentioned Nextdoor, and 22% who mentioned the city's website. I have a joke that I usually throw in here about when social media makes it to the top of the list here, but I'll, I'll save it for another time since it's a long presentation. All right. 41% of the residents we spoke with indicated that there was a topic that they would like more information about from the city in the future. We asked them to tell us what that topic was, and went in and then later grouped them into the categories you see here. So at the top of the list, city development, growth, and construction plans, that was the most common topic of interest for residents. About 18% planned to address, want information about how the city plans to address homelessness, and 13% wanted information about low-income housing or rent control. Okay, so I've covered a lot of ground here, and again, the report itself is a lot more detailed, so I'll just be quick here in my summary of what I think these results mean, and then certainly welcome questions from council when I'm done. You know, I think anytime you're doing a survey like this, it is a snapshot in time, right? It is taking opinions of your residents in a particular period of time, and so it's always important to sort of keep in mind the context, right? What's happening in, in the, in the few years and months leading up to this particular survey? And I think by any measure, the last two years have been very difficult period of time. With the pandemic, it, it took lives, it took livelihoods, and you, like other cities, were really forced to kind of reinvent yourselves in how you provide services to residents. When you had facilities that were closed, mandatory social distancing to protect public health, et cetera, you had to figure out ways of, and quite frankly, the needs of your residents changing sudden, very abruptly in some cases, you know, it forced, you know, public agencies to really rethink how they deliver services, and it, you know, it made it more challenging to do so because of, you know, the, the public health rules that you had to pay attention to. And I mentioned that because, you know, when you set that as your backdrop, that, you know, this has been two of the most difficult years, certainly in, in, you know, in my adult lifetime for public agencies, and you consider all that, you know, it's encouraging that your residents are still generally satisfied with the city's efforts to provide municipal services. We saw that they were, you know, pleased with the overall quality of life in the city. They were pleased with the city's overall performance in providing municipal services, particularly when it came to fire protection and EMS, trash and recycling, and special events, police, and recreation. And for those residents who had a, a reason to interact with city staff over the past year, we saw that, you know, that staff received high marks for the customer service they provide. And so, you know, I think all in all, when you look at this as a report card on the city's performance, it's a solid report card, right? Especially when you consider what's been going on, again, leading up to this point. Now, like any survey, that's, that's sort of a customer satisfaction survey, so to speak, it should be not just about where are we today, but also where can we improve, right? Where do we have opportunities to, to better serve our residents' needs? When you look across the survey at all the different questions that we ask, I think the bullet points you see here on the slide are, are your best opportunity areas. Homelessness is the obvious one, that showed up at the top of the list for a number of different areas that we were surveying on. Affordable housing both for low-income and middle-income families and doing what you can to facilitate more of that was also a top priority for your residents. And then you, you, you see the, the issues of, you know, street repair and maintenance, continuing to manage growth and development, as well as economic development. I'm aware that some of these bullets seem to be intention with one another, right? How do you provide more affordable housing and economic development while at the same time you're, you know, effectively managing growth and development? You know, sometimes people would see those as diametrically opposed. I don't necessarily see it that way, but keep in mind that these are also the priorities across a range of your residents, and so you do have some who are very concerned about growth and development, and that's where they're going to key in on, and then you have others that are really concerned about affordable housing, and that's their priority. And so with that, let me go ahead and end my presentation. I welcome questions from council if there are any.
Thank you very much, Mr. McNaulny, for the presentation, and we have questions from Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, thank you for the presentation. Sorry, I'm looking for somebody and it's online. So the, I just wanted to know, I know you mentioned in the beginning of the presentation that things have changed as far as how to contact residents and how to get responses out of them. I'm not even sure where to look. Is it possible for you to bring up his, his image? I just wanted to know what the respondents strategically reached out to? In other words, was it a cross-section of business, residents from different areas of the city, and residents of diverse annual incomes?
Yeah, the short answer is no on businesses. We don't, we didn't survey businesses as part of the survey. This was only of adult residents within the city of Ventura. But yes, in terms of it being a balanced distribution geographically across the city as well as demographically, so we look at ethnicity, we look at age, we look at homeownership, et cetera. Household income is one of those things that's really tricky to line up on because there's a certain percentage of people that just aren't going to tell you that, right? They, and so rather than try and line up on that, we'll often look at homeownership as a kind of a rough proxy for socioeconomic status in some ways, as well as the other demographics. And then what we do is we look at our sample and look at how closely it aligns to what the census says that your profile should be as a city, and, you know, our sample closely matches that.
Thank you. And the strategies you used to reach the respondents, since you were saying that landlines don't exist as much?
Yeah, so we use, we still do reach out by telephone, and both landlines and mobile phones. It's just that, you know, as, as you know, landlines aren't very common anymore, and so we don't just rely on that, right? If someone has one, we will call it. Most of our phone completes, though, are being done by a mobile phone. But we've all been trained to call screen, right? When the phone rings, you don't just pick it up and say hello anymore. You look and see if you recognize the number, and some of us, if they, if they don't recognize the number, they won't pick it up. And so for that reason, in part, we also recruit using email for respondents, and then we also recruit using text messages. The nice thing about text messages are that they tend to go right through, right? So some people may call screen, some people might have their email spam filter set really high, right, so that it picks up a lot of things and they may not see the email invite. The text message invite tends to go right through. And so, but using the, all three in combination, what that allows us to do is if somebody is habitual call screener, we have a chance to get them by email, and we also have a chance to send them a text and, and get their participation that way. And that's one of the reasons why, frankly, we overshot on sample as much as we did. We were contracted to do 600, and we wound up bringing back 1,070, in part because we were very good about following up.
Thank you. And would you say that sampling 1% of the population is, is general practice or inaccurate representation in your?
Well, that's, that's the beautiful thing about inferential statistics. It's not how many people we speak to, it's how we choose the people that we speak to in a random manner.
Yes.
That allows us to extrapolate out with, you know, in this case, a margin of error of just plus or minus 3%. The interesting thing about inferential statistics and looking at the margin of error as well is that the population size matters very little. So in the city of Ventura, with the sample size we have, we can achieve a plus or minus 3% margin of error at the 95% confidence interval. I could take that same sample size, apply it to the city of Los Angeles, right, much, much bigger, and achieve about the same margin of error. So the sample, the population size really doesn't matter much, it's the sample size that matters.
Okay, thank you. And last question, it seemed that page two kind of contradicted what page 11 said, so it was suggesting that residents were satisfied with fire and, and emergency responses, and then on page 11, it's saying they felt overtly that services needed to be improved or something. I think, correct me if I'm interpreting it incorrectly, I just wanted to know what, why the contradiction or the appearance?
Yeah, I'm trying to say, you said slide two?
I think it was, maybe I was wrong on the slide number. Keep going. You have satisfaction with services provided, fire protection, emergency medical services, it was overwhelmingly satisfied. And then on page 11, if you go to that one.
Oh, improving. I don't see that as a contradiction. What I see that as is, right now, they are happy, I mean, they're satisfied with the service levels they're receiving. You know, they're, they're happy with the, the fire department's performance, but when you ask them, you know, should we be spending money on improving fire protection and services in the future, they say, yes, that's a high priority. So I think the idea is, we're satisfied, but we would like to spend even more on this. There's also a difference between services and facilities, right? Sometimes you can have good services and your facilities aren't necessarily up to, up to standard, and to the extent that residents recognize that, it can play into this situation. The odd thing is, I will tell you this, and we do a lot of revenue measure research for cities as well, what you tend to find is the better job they think you're doing in an area, the more likely they are to support a revenue measure to maintain and improve those services.
Thank you very much for the responses to those questions. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And now we have Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you again for this survey results report. I think for me, the biggest question being that it was very prominent in your results is the homelessness. I'm curious to know, was there a, a definition of what that means or a breakdown of what that means? Because homelessness is different from vagrancy, and it could be different from mental health issues. And so I'm just curious if there was any, any more specificity in terms of what, what did they mean when they said homelessness?
So the first time it pops up, which is back here on, sorry, the changes to improve the city, right? What's the one change that the city could make to improve the quality of life in Ventura? That's an open-ended statement, so they get to say in their own words. So they'll say things like, address homeless issues, and or, and come out in a variety of different ways, but it's basically, you know, talking about homelessness as a problem from a variety of different, different perspectives. So we're not providing that answer to them, they're telling us in their own words what they mean. So within that, we could probably go back and look at those verbatims and see what kind of different facets of, of homelessness their residents are keying in on, but having done that a lot for other cities, I can tell you that oftentimes it's just, you got to fix the homeless problem.
Yeah, that, that's just such a big statement though, right? Because like I said, I, I think there's just so many levels to homelessness, and I don't think it's, it's to our best interest to just say, address homeless issues, because that has so many layers to it. So that's why I'm asking if there was any more specifics on that, but I understand, I understand where you're, what you're coming from.
I, I will tell you this, that I've had some cities that have sort of tackled this head-on, this issue, and to understand how their residents think about this, and we've done entire surveys, 15-minute interviews, that are all about homelessness, right? Coming at it from every single angle to figure out, you know, to what, what do their residents think of when they think of homelessness? What do they think the causes are? Where do they think the homeless are coming from? Are they residents of their community that have become homeless? Are they coming in from outside? What sort of strategies they would propose for the city? What sort of strategies they would propose for the city addressing it? Where, you know, what levels of government and agencies and other private sources do they think should be, you know, stepping in to deal with the problem? So my point is, it's one, I agree with you that it's one, it's a very deep topic. I mean, you could, you could wade in and spend 15 minutes talking about it. But on the other hand, it's also a topic that, you know, is top of mind for a lot, for, you know, a corner of your residence and.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and I guess if anything, it's indicative of what the residents are putting out there as priorities for the council to address. So thank you for that. I also was thinking about, because you guys were the same, I guess, organization who did the survey about 10 years ago too. And I was just curious, and you touched on it a little bit, what are the consistent trends? And what, if anything, are huge disparities in comparison to the last time you did a survey like this for our city?
Yeah, you know, I, I kind of purposely have not spent a lot of time going back 10, it's actually more than 10 years now, I think it's close to 12 years
Yeah.
Since the last time we did the study. Mainly because methodologically, very different now than it was then. Obviously, a lot of time has elapsed, and we also just came through a pandemic, which is a, you know, unprecedented set of events. And so, you know, going back and looking at how, you know, what's changed from 13 years ago, 12 years ago, to me, that's, that's not very enlightening, especially since any change we see in the survey results could arguably be a function of the methodology being different than, you know, opinions being different, right? That said, I will say that, you know, I mentioned the communication challenges that city, cities struggle with and are having to, and this is not just Ventura, it's everybody. And so that's kind of a common pattern. Homelessness is another topic that, you know, not just in Ventura, but in many other cities in Southern California, has really risen to the top of the list. Prior to 2016, and again, I do this for a lot of cities, homelessness was nowhere on the radar in most, in most of these surveys. If you asked it, it would be way down, maybe 2% of people would mention it. And it has risen to the top of the list in a lot of communities. So that's obviously a trend that's changed. I think affordable housing is another one in general that has changed a lot in terms of the public sentiment. It used to be, when you talked about affordable housing, you'd get this knee-jerk negative reaction out of residents, particularly homeowners, because they just thought of it as, oh, you're putting in Section 8 housing, and I don't want that in my community, right? Now, the whole narrative and discussion around affordable housing is very different because we're talking about affordable housing for the average resident, right? Or middle-income residents as opposed to just very low-income residents. So there's sort of a recognition that there's not enough of this around. So these are some of the changes that have, that I've seen particularly in the last four or five years.
Okay. And I think the last question I did have, just out of curiosity, because we, we are, I don't, I don't even know if we're in the end of the pandemic yet, or middle or what, but I was.
I hope we're near the end.
I know, I was, I, I just wondered if anyone or any of the responses were specific to the pandemic. I don't think I saw responses to recovery.
Yeah, very little. And, you know, it's really interesting, again, we, you know, we've served it all through this. We've watched the pandemic go from being obviously a hot issue when it first happened. There was a lot of uncertainty, a lot of concern and fear around it. To, then it was a very divisive issue for a while, as you, as you might imagine. And it just seems to have, I mean, people have kind of moved on mentally, right? For, for the most part. And so when you ask them, like, you know, if I went and changed this question to what's the most important issue you face in a community, I'd be shocked if one out of 10 said the pandemic.
Right.
It's just, they've just got other things on their mind now.
Yeah. Right, well, thank you very much. Those are my questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios. And now we have Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Are the questions that you ask fairly similar to questions you ask in other cities?
Some of them. I mean, we always tailor a survey like this to the needs of our clients, and so many of the questions in here are unique to the city of Ventura. I have not asked these types of questions anywhere else. We built them for your survey. But things like this question, you know, what's the one change that the city government could change to make improvements? That's a common question. Typically, the overall satisfaction question is also common.
And the, the employee satisfaction, is that what you said? Is that typical as well?
Oh, yeah, that, that, well, not all cities ask that question. But when they do, we tend to focus on professionalism, helpfulness, accessibility.
And Dr. McGlorn, you, you do SCAT cities, right? You've done, what, in the last year, how many cities have you done?
I don't know how many in the last cities. I can tell you during my career, I've probably done 400.
Okay. Is there a way, so when we get these numbers, I think overall, we're happy with the numbers, but I, I lack an ability to compare them to other cities. So when I look, I was very impressed that the staff received what I thought were extremely high marks, 90% on professionalism. But it would be great for us, I think, if we could say, okay, in the 10 other cities that you've done in the last year, what did that professionalism mark look like? And, and even in some of these that are typical in your other ones, is it possible for you to give us a comparison between our results and maybe six or eight cities that you've done in the last year?
Yeah, what I'd want to do is, because I don't want to just speak about this offhand, because I want to make sure I'm quoting the right numbers and everything, but I think this is something that would be a follow-up item, where I could look and say, hey, for a couple of these key indicators, you know, what are we seeing in Ventura relative to what we otherwise normally see?
Okay, thank you. Because I, for me, and I've, in my past career, did a lot of market research, and I always wanted to compare our results with my peers to see really how we were doing. So that would really, I think, help all of us. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schrader. And now we have Councilmember Halter.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Doctor. I appreciate you coming up with this survey and sharing that with us. I think overall, it validates what a lot of us have known. I honestly didn't see anything where I said, wow, that's really unusual. And so for that reason, I think the questions, while good, they're fairly general. And I think that some type of comparison, where a couple, a couple of my other colleagues have mentioned, is comparison to other cities on these questions, comparison to past years in the city of Ventura. I think those are something that could, could be helpful, even though dynamics change every year, in our case significantly because of the pandemic. But those are things that I think I would find even more interesting. And then the final thing is, let's see, things like a question, when we see, address homeless issues as an example, that probably would have been high on the charts for the last 20 years. But I think perhaps even taking it to the next step in asking people what they would like to see be done, as opposed to just find housing for those that are unhoused, you know? And then likewise, same thing with affordable housing, is people say, just build more affordable housing. But the reality is, why is housing unaffordable here? And we really need to look at those questions, and that's the bigger, those are the bigger issues. And I think oftentimes, those are areas that we either need to educate ourselves and educate our community on what makes up the homeless population, unhoused population, why housing is so unaffordable in our area, why businesses may not be knocking down our door to be here, looking at some of those questions. I also look at, I know that we have made significant progress, as I see some city staff here, for when it comes to community development. And we really have, we made significant progress, and I believe we're on the eve of some significant advancement to the point that we could end up being by far the best city to do business in. And that's my goal, and that's my hope. But I'm kind of afraid some of the people sitting at home today, that I know out there in the construction industry, in the trades, in the service industry, may be saying that, what do you mean they're happy with the results from City Hall? Because it really depends on your point of contact. You know, your point of contact and your ability to be communicated to, and the ability for the city to deliver the service that we say has to be delivered. So those are more comments, I guess, than questions. But I think I, I would like to have seen a little bit deeper dive, but I really appreciate the validation on this, on this survey. Really wasn't a question in there, other than if you have a comment?
No, I mean, I, I think that in terms of the, the depth of questions, it's always a trade-off. You know, we could dive in on any one of these topics in more detail, and we have for certain cities. I think because this was the first time the city has done this in over 10 years, there was kind of an interest in, in shooting wide, you know, casting the net wide and covering a lot of different topics. We weren't necessarily covering any one substantive topic in, in great detail, but, you know, that's certainly something that can be done in the future. I think the other thing I would say is this, this study is going to become more interesting to you in the future as you, the city sounds like it's getting back on, you know, an every other year cycle for doing this, which is what most of our cities do. Like, I have some cities that have done this every other year religiously for over 20 years. And so we have 20 years worth of data that you can compare and look at, and while the top three issues have really changed over the last four cycles. And that'll, that'll, I think, make this a richer study for you the next time it comes back around.
Great, thank you very much.
I just want to reiterate exactly what Dr. McGlorn just said. I think in staff's opinion, the best city to compare Ventura to is ourselves over time. And it just, I want to follow on that theme, because I think a few different council members have brought this up, but it's staff's intent, just as the doctor said, to continue to do this and bring it back in front of the city council on a regular basis, so we have that ongoing trend line. What you're seeing right now is really just the baseline, and this is kind of the jumping off point going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Aldicon. And thank you, Councilmember Halter, for your questions and comments. And now we have Councilmember Friedman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In, in following up the deputy mayor, I would agree that maybe we could have some comparison cities, but I, I think we should have comparison cities that have similarities, such as a coastal town. Because of the unique weather we have, and the, and also the fact that we're the county seat, where most of the social services are provided, we, you know, we obviously have some homeless issues above and beyond what another city might have who don't provide that, who aren't on the coast. So I, I would be interested in seeing that, provided they're like cities. And if they're not, then I, I don't know if it's even worth the trouble of, of getting them. I would also reiterate, in fact, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios, as she often does, must have been reading my mind, because as I was reading the report, I was thinking the exact same thing. The number one issue is very broad, and it's got many tentacles. And it would be helpful to, I think, the council to know specifically, if somebody had a, said, you need to address the homeless issue, is it because they're concerned that there's, there's not affordable housing or very low-cost housing? Is it because they recently had a run-in in our downtown with a homeless person that they felt threatened by? That's a completely different situation. And I think that it's important for us to be able to drill down on that, so that we're able to make the best decisions going forward as to what we are going to do with regard to what appears to be the number one issue. What's, so I, I don't know if that's available, and I guess I'll ask that as a question. Was, when the question was asked, that open-ended question, was there a follow-up that said, what do you mean? What do you mean specifically?
No, and for any of the items, there wasn't the follow-up. It was their opportunity to tell us in their own words. What we can do is we can go back and look at the specifics of what they said to see, to the extent that they provide more detail there, how does it sort of play out in terms of different aspects of it? You know, I, again, you know, I, it's interesting, because you do, when we do these surveys in more depth for some other cities that have decided, again, to just drill in on, on homelessness, you know, there's some nuanced opinions out there. You have your certain percentage of folks who, you know, they see it as a housing problem, right? And, and, and sort of an economic problem, and are really into supportive services and kind of getting folks back on their feet and others. You have a small percentage of folks who are really just punitive about the whole thing. They just would like to see no homelessness in the community and do whatever it takes to get them out. And I think what you're seeing more and more in recent years is people just saying, I don't have a preferred strategy, I want all, any and all strategies that work, right? So whatever that combination of things is, whatever we can do to kind of solve the problem. But then the other piece that comes up with it is, when you think homelessness, it's, sometimes it's a lot of the things around homelessness. So if it's encampments, or it's trash and litter, that is something that some folks will key on, key in on. And then, and we'll also be able to, so what I would suggest we do is we go back and we look at those open-ended questions to see if there's more detail in some of those answers that would get to this. I know that beyond that first open-ended question, it was a structured question about addressing homelessness, so it didn't, it didn't have more details to it than that.
Thank you very much. And then just finally, just an observation on the slide that you happen to have up, slide five. It's so typical of Ventura. I've, I've lived here for, going on 33 years. Items besides the, the first bar, the second and the third bar, within the plus or minus for error, they're very close in that you have a lot of people here who want us to provide more affordable housing, and you have almost the same number who want us to limit growth, preserve open space and farmland. So welcome to being a member of the city council and local government, and trying to take care of and make as many people happy as possible. It is unfortunately impossible. So just an observation at what we're dealing with, and I, I just found it so interesting that you were able to encapsulize it so classically, so typical, so classic of Ventura on, on slide five. So, and I'm sure lots of other cities too. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Friedman. And now we have Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Kind of following up on that, and, and this isn't a solicitation to get a pat on the back, but I'm, I'm looking at, on this same chart, and it says that only one out of 40 people, I think 2.5% want to change and improve the council. Should I, should I take that, that that's healthy? Is, is that number higher or lower at other cities? It seems relatively low to me.
That's not a red flag, right? When you, when there are problems, you're going to see that number up more like 8%, 9% if you've got a, you know, a volatile dysfunctional council or something else going on there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schrader. I just have a couple of questions. Is it typical for most cities to have the responses that we saw with regards to knowledge of state laws regarding development and housing?
Well, that is a, that's a question that we structured just for the city. So I've not asked it that way for other cities, so I don't have the comparison. I can, a lot of other cities kind of come at it a different way, where they were wanting to see what strategies for developing more affordable housing residents were comfortable with, recognizing that some of those strategies are things that the city can't even control, like, you know, the ability to develop more plexes in existing single-family residential zoned. You know? zoned, you know, areas.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just wondering, because I know that state laws change so quickly that sometimes the information changes from one year to the next. And so it's challenging for us to keep track of everything that's going on. And I can imagine that for the public, it is even more challenging to keep track of all of the changes happening at the state level.
Yeah, and I would just say offhand, although I don't have the data on it, I wouldn't expect that other cities' residents would somehow be much more aware of these rule changes than yours were. I think most people are unaware of them because they're relatively new and they didn't get a lot of press.
Yeah, thank you. And with regards to the types of agencies that you work with, or do you only work with cities or do you also work with counties, school districts, et cetera? I'm just thinking about our other partners. Have you worked with any of these other organizations and agencies in Ventura County?
Yeah, in fact, we actually did the polling work for the county's most recent general plan update. So, and then we had done some work for the county in the past, looking at, this goes back a little ways, looking at potential revenue measures. We've also worked with other cities like Portland EMI, school districts like Los Virginas, I think we did, worked in San Paula. So we work with a number of different agencies, you know, as, you know, a lot of our work is sort of focused in Southern California. And so, you know, the density of our clients is greater when you get into LA and you get into Orange County, but, you know, we've still had, you know, done a fair amount of work in Ventura. And again, quite a bit of work actually for the city of Ventura, but it's dated, it's over a decade ago.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering if some of our other partners with public agencies have gone through this process and perhaps if there are themes that I'm sure are present, common themes, and to see what areas we need to work together more closely on with all of our partners, including the county and the school district, et cetera, and even some regional issues, right, from other cities in the county. What are some of the best practices with regards to that? How do perhaps other cities use those public opinion polls from counties, cities, school districts to perhaps merge some of that information and work together on certain items?
I honestly have not seen a lot of that from a school district-to-city perspective, just because the topics that if you do this for a school district, they tend to be so narrowly focused on, you know, education and curriculum and other things that it doesn't kind of overlap as much into city work. I think county, there's a natural sort of nesting that happens of cities within counties. And so I have seen that, you know, it's nice to, if the county has done this recently, to be able to look at their numbers and say, okay, countywide, we're seeing these patterns. Within Ventura, we're seeing, you know, for the same types of questions, we're seeing, you know, somewhat different patterns perhaps. The challenge in all this is just, you know, are the questions that they're asking, do they mesh with your questions and the timeliness of all this, right? So I think the county's general plan update research is, well, got to be four, five years old at this point. So, you know, but it's always good to look and see. I know that they, for example, had asked some questions that were related to providing additional affordable housing as part of their general plan update. And so one could look at that data, albeit it dated, and then isolate Ventura city residents and then, you know, that's another set of data that you could play with.
All right, wonderful. Well, thank you so much, Dr. McLarnie. We really appreciate all of the information that you have shared with us tonight. And we look forward to continuing to learn more about public opinion here in our city.
Great. Well, thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Absolutely, thank you very much. All right, so with that, we will continue with our agenda. Our next item is our closed session report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have closed session tonight on the items agendized and there was no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is city council communications or reports. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to announce that the next G-PAC meeting won't occur until after our going dark, correct? Oh, that's right, sorry, sorry, sorry. July 19th, I'm sorry. I'm already ready for August and a break. I apologize, yes. July 19th. And then following July 19th, on the 20th, there's also going to be a discussion about climate. So those persons who want to be involved in that discussion, I believe it's two days in a row, the 20th and the 21st, it's going to be here at City Hall, so go on the website to find out the exact location of that meeting. And we really want your input because this is one of those plan drivers or one of those important topics or issues that many community members have been asking for, for the last two or three years. And now we have the opportunity to contribute to that conversation. And Matt Ramey and Associates, with the, under the guidance of Matt Ramey and Associates and our community development department, that would be Peter and Neta. And so they'll give the parameters of that discussion. I just want to make a little note that the general plan committee isn't here to create necessarily a full-on climate action plan itself, but it wants from the community their concerns and their ideas as it relates to what can be done within a specific scope related to climate action. So come out and share your ideas and your opinions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Next, we have Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quick, I wanted to acknowledge and welcome our new housing services manager, Leona Rollins. I got a chance to meet her briefly before our meeting tonight, so congratulations and welcome aboard, as well as congratulations to Stacy Sarazua, who is now the new parks manager for the city. So it's just important to recognize staff in their, in their new positions. And then lastly, want to thank all of our public safety individuals who responded to firework calls over the Fourth of July and who also were instrumental in making sure that our Fourth of July festivities ran smoothly and safe. So thank you for that. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios. And now we have Councilmember Johnson.
This is the, 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 this is the.
As you can see, we have technical difficulties sometimes. That was our Monday night remix, but it seems like.
This is the, 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 this is the.
It's on a loop.
This is the, this is the, this is the, this is the.
Let's see if we can try that again and see.
Sorry about that, I'll try a different microphone.
We can hear, we can hear you now, Councilmember Johnson.
Okay, my apologies. My apologies. Did everything get messed up? I'll start over. I just want to report, Second Saturday was a great success. Between the area from the YMCA just to Ana Capua, we picked up 15 bags of trash. We'll have another Second Saturday in August and we'll have another one in September and all through the year. The, speaking of events, tomorrow, we will have a Hopes Subcommittee meeting at City Hall. The Hopes Subcommittee is the council Subcommittee looking into issues around homelessness. It will meet at 3:00 PM in the community meeting room. And as you noticed, I am meeting remotely and I like to do a sort of chat or get-together after a council meeting this time. If anybody would like to do that, we will do it virtually tomorrow, Tuesday at 8:00 PM. To get the Zoom link, you can find me on Facebook or Instagram. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. All right, and with that, we will continue with our agenda. We have city manager communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As our clerk pulls up the PowerPoint slide. All right, we have a busy summer full of community engagement. I'll run through all the different community engagement opportunities that are coming up here in the month of July, starting with the commercial cannabis public meetings. The next phase in the commercial cannabis permit application process continues with a public meeting on Monday, July 18th at 6:00 PM. The meeting will be right here in the community meeting room at City Hall. The public can make comments online ahead of the meeting until this Wednesday, that is July 13th. Online public comments will remain available until Friday, July 22nd. And live public comments can also be made during the in-person meeting on the 18th. You can learn more about that process and provide online comments at cityofventura.ca.gov/cannabis. Moving along, the upcoming fire community meeting. Our fire department continues to host their community meetings throughout the city. Join Station 4, located at Telephone near Montgomery, on Wednesday, July 20th at 6:00 PM. If you haven't been to one of these already, I encourage members of the community to go and attend one of these. This is an opportunity for residents to tour their local fire station, hear about current conditions and share input about our fire services. You can learn more about that at cityofventura.ca.gov/fireoutreach. Moving right along, the Climate Action and Resilience Plan Workshop. This is a doubleheader. There are two opportunities to get involved. The first one will be on next week at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, July 20th and Thursday, July 21st. Both of those opportunities will be right here at City Hall in the atrium downstairs on the first floor. Both workshops will also include Spanish interpretation. You can learn more about that at planventura.com. Also be sure to stay on the lookout for more extensive outreach efforts throughout the summer, starting with the next General Plan Advisory Committee meeting, as Councilmember Brown pointed out, on July 19th at 6:00 PM. You can stay updated by visiting the city's website on that front. And then the way of city council meetings will be back here on July 25th to talk about two items and more, one of which will be the quarterly update on the council goals, a modification to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And then we have our last meeting of the summer before the recess on August 1st, until we take a recess until September 12th. That is all from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aldicon, for that information. And our next item is public communications. Do we have public communications this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've received seven speaker cards for public communications. Our first speaker of the evening is going to be Mark Serrada, followed by Carol Spector.
I'm getting old, I can't see unless I have my computer in front of me. Okay, can everyone hear me okay? Okay. Good evening, council members. What I'd like to bring to your attention tonight is the seemingly lack of transparency by the city associated with increasing the allowable building height to six stories in parts of downtown and midtown. These changes have been found in the last draft version of the housing element in a recent contract led by the city. Many of us were surprised to see this change in a draft housing element. When did it happen? When was it discussed? Who directed it to be included? In reviewing G-PAC meeting videos and comparing notes with other community members, there seems to be hints and snippets of this change, but unfortunately, there was no focus and widely broadcast discussion that a change of this magnitude really deserves. The statement of work by the, for a contract that the city has recently let with Ramey and Associates includes the development of a six-story overlay. The city used an informal RFP for contracts that do not exceed 60K threshold. The Ramey proposal included an option for two public workshops for approximately $14,000. The small cost of these optional workshops wasn't accepted by the city. So let me summarize. A major change to the housing element has been made that will likely require the largest change ever to the downtown and midtown specific plans. There is no focused public discussion associated with this addition, and once this goes to the state, there's no going back. A contract has been let that includes the development of a six-story overlay. The contract was developed with a 60K cost ceiling that minimized any required internal and external review. The $59,000 contract is incredibly small, given that it will result in a seismic change to the downtown and midtown specific plans and of course, the look and feel of our city. These plans took hundreds, if not thousands, of person hours to develop with dozens of people involved. More importantly, they were developed in a manner that included public feedback and from the community. And it seems right now as if the city is now willing to make these changes with barely a bat's eye, bat of an eye. And then finally, to add insult to injury, the city was not willing to pay $14,000 to enable public engagement. A cynic might say that the public engagement was thrown under the bus so as to keep the contract costs under $60,000 and hence minimize scrutiny and review. So no matter what our differences are of opinion on policy, we expect and we deserve that the city and council works with the public in a proactive and transparent manner. In other words, when a change of this size is proposed, it should be broadcast as far and wide and as loud as possible. Everyone in the community should be aware of the change, no matter their opinion and no matter if they are publicly engaged. That is by bar for which proactive transparency should be compared. The community, the city council is ultimately responsible to ensure that this happens.
Thank you, Mr. Serrada.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Wendy Sauter, followed by Terrence Foley.
Good evening, council members. On January 31st, you passed the housing element to satisfy state deadlines. You were assured the document could be improved after initial submission. Most of the discussion was focused on locations for and numbers of new housing. What was not discussed in the 334-page document you approved were the following two topics. First, item 18.3 states, increase allowed heights for residential use in form-based codes such as downtown and midtown to be six stories. This is before any density bonus. Developers are now working to get one and even two additional stories above what is allowed by code. Potentially, you're allowing seven to eight-story buildings in downtown, midtown, or any other part of town with form-based codes. Best case, this is doubling what is allowed in Ventura currently. Secondly, item 18.4, which is intended to facilitate lot consolidations. It allows ministerial lot line adjustments while allowing more flexibility in meeting certain key requirements. It also encourages developers to meet with owners to work out deals while providing incentives for lot consolidation. This item will allow developers to purchase and consolidate several small residential lots and build a large apartment complex right in the middle of an otherwise low-density neighborhood. Will you get more housing? Yes, but at what cost? This type of action will undoubtedly compromise character, feel, density, and traffic patterns of a neighborhood. I would like to know why you voted to pass these two items without any public input. Who even proposed these modifications to our current well-thought-out codes? You can fix this with a revised housing element. You are allowed to do so. I hope you will review what was passed and developed and improved Housing Element 2.0 reflective of the community's best interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sauter.
Terrence Foley, followed by Glenn Overly.
I'm Terrence Foley, representing the Pierpont Bay Community Council Executive Board. And two things. The first one, to thank the city of Ventura and especially the police department and Chief Schindler for the work to minimize the fireworks impact during the Fourth of July. So I wasn't here for that. My animals just can't handle that, but as I'm understanding, there's a remarkable police presence in Pierpont that was extremely helpful. And the second thing is just to update on the short-term vacation rental ordinance. I received this map from Peter Gilli. It's a little bit out of date, but it was compiled. It's a little bit out of date, but it was compiled in early 2022. And Peter acknowledged that there is an over-concentration of STVRs in Pierpont. They're shown. You know, when I've been talking for the last seven years to the city council about this, what I've asked is that the city develop a vision, to say, have a vision on where this is going. So since I spoke to you last month, there's been another six homes that have become STVRs. So at that rate, at the exact rate, it would turn out to be 75 per year, and I don't think that's the city plan for housing, to lose 75 homes a year to long-term housing to short-term rental. That's not part of a real vision that anybody on the dais would have. So what I'm saying, what I'm asking here is, and I know it looks like I'm up here alone, but actually, I mean, in the last couple of weeks, I've gotten 27 letters from people saying, "We need a new ordinance for short-term rental," especially in the context of knowing, "Well, when's the right time for that?" Well, it's always been now, for the last seven years. Well, for the last 11 years, it's been now. So as now comes this direction, and a new city council comes this direction, we're down to just this tiny window where something should happen, otherwise it's going to go backwards. But just to say that what I'm asking here is in that window, is that two city council members would get together, because I know that it's a priority for legal and for planning, but nothing's happening. So if two city council members can please get together and make a formal policy consideration and a real directive to city staff to develop the ordinance and move forward for something that will be good for the residents of Ventura. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. And just a reminder to the members of the public, if you wish to show support for a comment that someone makes, you can also go like this, and that'll visually show us that you are supporting that comment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Tonight, I'm going to talk about three minor topics. The first one, $50,000. The city did not need to spend nearly $50,000 to remove a commissioner. The council had the authority even without an investigation. I don't support the council on that decision. Some of you may say, "What about potential liability?" It still is $50,000. Number two, redistricting. Shortly after the February 7th, 2022 redistricting meeting, I submitted a PRA request for communications related to the revised map. Today, five months after my initial request, I received exactly what I thought I would. Citizens were again robbed of an opportunity to view the revised map that council adopted. The revised map was accepted by clerical staff on a Friday after normal business hours and not included on the agenda as an item that council would discuss that Monday night. This new revised map was forwarded to the consultant on a Sunday evening before the meeting. The consultant worked on the map until nearly midnight to input the data in less than 24 hours. The citizens never saw this map, and at least one council member stated for the record they had not seen the map until late Monday afternoon. Again, the word used, "lack of transparency" for public to discuss a map that was received well after the normal deadline. For those council members that did receive the map prior to Monday, remember the recent Port Oneimi article in the newspaper about documents being shared with other council members outside of a meeting. Is this a potential Brown Act violation? And number three, the Washington, D.C. trip. From documents I have in my possession, I count at least four and as many as six or more times during the D.C. trip that a majority of council members were together and may have discussed business outside the presence of the public. Madam Mayor, inside the city clerk's office is a saying, "Protect democracy." Please use the recent example of Port Oneimi and agendize and set a public meeting to discuss every meeting that took place during the D.C. trip that was a violation of the Brown Act. The public has an absolute right to know. Let's protect democracy and publicly address the D.C. trip as council said they would moving forward after receiving the district attorney's letter. And finally, just to close this thing off, when I look at that chart that was given earlier this evening, and it said, "Would you donate $100 for police or fire?", I normally would donate $100 for that. I have no problem with it. But the way that this city council has spent money, I'm not willing to do it because you're not transparent enough, and you've lost the trust of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overly.
Our next speaker is Allison Carlson, followed by Judy Howar.
Hello, everyone. First, a quick comment about homelessness, since that's everybody's number-one concern. I don't think that's going anywhere. In fact, it's just as bad as it was back when we had the Aloha Steak murder. The police still have no place to take a psychotic individual off the street, and we have no treatment for those people. And the number, you know, and most homeless people are either mentally ill, or they are drug addicted, or they're both. So until we solve those problems, we're not going to get anywhere on homeless. Anyway, my thing that I'm really here to talk about is the fire inspection fee. I'm one of the homeowners that lives next to the hillside open space, and it takes a lot of work and money to keep our slope clear, and I think it's unfair to top that off by billing us for a fire inspection. Public services are not supposed to be à la carte or pay-as-you-use. Otherwise, we'd be charging people to use libraries. You'd be charged for the fire department if they put out a house fire for you, and it's just not that way. Everybody here in this town pays taxes for public schools, whether you have kids in school or not. And so this, in the same logic, to single us out for a special charge for an inspection, for us to do something that benefits not only us but for the entire city, that's just not right. And what I want to say is that I would like to get rid of that, and if you elect not to get rid of that, I want to point out that almost half of this bill is admin charges, and that is like crazy to me, and I think it's really unfair. I think if you're going to keep this, which I hope you do not, you at least put a way where we can pay downtown at the city, maybe a drop box or something, if we do not want to incur the admin fees charged by your third-party vendor that's doing the collecting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson.
Judy Howar, followed by Trevor Gottman.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I wanted to first of all say I'm really appreciative of the parks, the hikes, the promenade, the marina, places that are free to use and enjoy here in Ventura. So I feel like we really have a great thing going in that direction. One other thing I feel very strongly about that would improve the city and improve our whole climate situation in the world is to consider electrification. It's better for our health. It's better for our world. It's not something that the city has to pay for. It would basically make housing more affordable. I know this will be coming up later, but I really want to suggest that you take a strong look at something that you can do that would really improve the world. And step by step, it's happening in California. It's happening throughout the United States. So I encourage you to think of that, because we do have a great place here, and I hope that you can add to that by making it a healthier place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
And our next and final speaker is Trevor Gottman.
Good evening, everybody. I hope I'm not bouncing around. Okay, thank you to your speakers, the last speaker and Mr. Foley. I have to ask also the city council to listen and listen carefully, because we really have to be delicate about how we deal with things, and once again, it comes down to the rules and regulations and enforcement. We don't force things. We do things correctly, or we let it be, and when anything we let it be, we check on. And so, you know, the results of Item 4A this afternoon, this evening, were really a good eye-opener, and, you know, the very last thing on the item was the very lowest score of what we can improve is enforce the laws, the rules of the city, which is something I'm not always, you know, sort of not into, but, you know, you really start at the lowest, start with the easy jobs first. And, you know, we make the rules. We make the laws, and Item 9B is coming up. I'd like to speak to that, but if I'm not allowed to, I just want to voice that we've got to be careful about what we, how we term, because words like aggressive can be, you know, these are our points of view, and we need to look at all our points of view, all the diversity we have in our town, and start being, one, probably Item Number Three, like a 3% of us, you know, sort of like courtesy, civility. We've all got the wild savage in us, and we all have to tame, find the tame in us. And, you know, so you represent who we are, and so place an emphasis on what you hear in the public commentary, a lot more emphasis than what I've seen, and I think we'll get to a place that we all want to be, and we all want to be here. And I thank you, and I look forward to just another wonderful evening with the community, and thank you for allowing us to do this remotely, and Mr. Johnson for helping us work out the bugs and bringing the bugs, and appreciate it, just acknowledge it and recognize it, and that's the start of respect. You know, acknowledge it and appreciate it and deal with it. So look forward to dealing with it. Much appreciated, everybody. Excuse the lengthy chat. I'll keep quiet now. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Gottman.
Okay, and Madam Mayor, my apologies. We do have one more speaker for public communications, George Novles.
Thank you, city council. Thank you for your efforts to govern responsibly. We are so blessed with cool, moist air from the ocean and the generous gifts of sunlight and wind energy that are so plentiful here in Ventura. Chumash residents of Ventura's past relied on these gifts to meet their needs. They walked for transit. They hand-carried water. They assembled buildings from branches and thulees without using natural gas, without using fossil fuels as an energy source. They lived more lightly upon this land, without causing climate change, without mining groundwater, without causing saltwater intrusion, and without burning so many tons of fossil fuels as we do today. We have the tools now to live as compassionately as they did with the same convenience that we currently enjoy today. Council, can you please use your tools to stop burning fuels? Having toured the Ormond Peker Plant and learned about our Southern California Energy Grid and Southern California Gas Reservoir Storage, I feel surprised at the extent to which we still burn so much fuel to heat water and to power a grid that serves tens of thousands of heat-producing appliances and air conditioners that make everyone else hotter while they make the privileged air conditioner owner cooler. I was even more surprised to learn of the high-pressure storage of greenhouse gases 10 times more potent than carbon dioxide in fragile aquifers prone to rupture like they did at Aliso Canyon, Porter Ranch, and Goleta has not yet experienced that kind of problem, but could. Methane releases and fuel burning increased evapotranspiration for our crops and landscape plants. They cause us to consume more water. Please take action now to electrify our new buildings with fire-safe storage and smart microgrids that help back up the clean power alliance' power delivery through high-wind conditions. Please ensure that new buildings in Ventura burn zero fossil fuels and encourage the use of electric and/or active transportation for customers, employees, contractors, and yes, delivery people and shippers. You have many tools, from incentives to rebates to permit prioritization to special taxes and assessments to penalties. Please use your tools to stop burning fuels. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novis.
And that concludes our public comment on item number eight.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Mr. Ali Khan, do you have any comments or follow-up?
If I may just invite up Community Development Director Peter Gilli, just to clarify a couple of comments made.
Yes, I'm going to touch on three topics. The first being that my department did enter into a contract with Ramey &amp; Associates for the housing element implementation to create form-based codes for the rezoned sites that were identified in the housing element. There are multiple form-based codes we're asking the consultant to work with us on. One is six stories. One is, I believe, up to three, and the other is a townhome style. Those would be applied to the housing element sites as the council approved in the housing element. Council could in the future choose to apply those overlays to other sites if council chooses to. There is no direct correlation between the work being performed for the housing element and the downtown-specific plant change. Now, on a side note, there are very clear, on the housing element, there are very clear comments from the state directing us to revisit some of our regulations, because many parts of our city allows six stories in our commercial and industrial areas, but the state commented that, "Why don't our mixed-use areas allow six stories?" And so, we did put in the housing element that we would study our form-based codes to reconcile what the differences are. That does not mean that six stories are going to be proposed in all locations, but we do need to address the state's comment on that issue. There was another comment about lot consolidation. This is actually something staff does not believe is a major issue, but the state believes it is a high-level issue. They see communities using, making it difficult to do lot consolidation as a tool to stop housing development. And so, they instructed us that we needed to strengthen our proposed objective to address that topic. Want to make it very clear that if there is lot consolidation in an R1 single-family neighborhood, that does not mean a multi-family apartment building is possible. Lot consolidation in the zone that allows apartments could allow for larger projects. So the last topic just I wanted to provide information on is on STVRs. I am in conversations with Mr. Foley. I shared the chart that shows, and I made the statement, as he noted, that when you look at the map of STVRs, there certainly appears to be a concentration in the Pierpont area. I also noted to Mr. Foley, as council is aware, we get a lot of information from both sides of the issue on the topic of STVRs, and what we would like to do is get the basic topics that those concerned with STVRs want addressed, then speak to the folks that are concerned with regulations on STVRs, and see if there's a middle ground where we can achieve basically what everybody wants without hiring a consultant and doing a more lengthy process. So that is the process that we are exploring and optimistic that we'll be able to work something out on that. Is there any other questions?
No, that was perfectly fine. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli. And with that, we will continue with our next agenda item, which is consent. So we have seven consent items on the agenda tonight. Would any council member like to pull an item, have questions on an item, or comments? All right, if we have none, then do we have any public communications for any of our consent items?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No public communications received on our consent items.
All right, thank you. So with that, we will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as recommended.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, we do have one member virtual, so we'll be doing a roll call vote tonight on all of the motions. Item number nine on the consent calendar, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Halter.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Yes.
Mayor Rubicalva.
Yes.
Seven i's, and the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I forgot to say I wanted to make a comment about-
I forgot to say I wanted to make a comment about the farmer's market being moved. I just wanted to say thank you to Meredith, Kevin Clarici, and the farmer's market lead. Forgive me, my brain's going dead. Say your name. Kira Shaw, yeah. That they all worked together to finalize an agreement and how they were going to make that happen. So thank you very much for the hard work.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, and with that, we will continue with our next agenda item. We have item 12A, abandonment of a city easement on property located at 2761 Palma Drive. And for that, we have our Assistant Public Works Director. You're present.
May I sit down?
Mr. City Clerk, have all of the noticing requirements been met?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this item has been adequately noticed.
Thank you. So we will open the public hearing. Welcome. Mr. Shady, I think maybe, is there a button that you can push?
Learn something every day. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. For record, my name is Peter Shady. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works. I'm before each night to request approval of the abandonment of a city easement on property located at 2761 Palma Drive. There should be an exhibit that we can pull up that you can see where that's located. The easement was originally dedicated and accepted when the surrounding lots were being subdivided as part of Track 2040 in 1970. An unused easement for an underground water line is in the way of a proposed industrial building. The underground water line does not exist and was not installed as originally planned. Ventura Water Staff have confirmed that they do not need this easement in the future. A summary vacation of this easement can be made pursuant to California Streets, Naha Code Section 8333, since the subject easement has not been used for the purpose for which it was dedicated or acquired. The recommendations before you are: Conduct a public hearing, determine that the summary vacation is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to 14 CCR Section 15332, and adopt a resolution summarily vacating and abandoning a city easement for an underground water line to be used to service fire hydrants and for fire prevention and firefighting purposes on property located at 2761 Palma Drive. And that concludes the presentation. I'm available for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Shady. Do we have any questions from council members? Councilmember Brown?
I mean, not anything other than how are you able to find that needle in the haystack?
This was a part of the development process. So, so the owner of the parcel wanted to develop it and located buildings that were within the easement through that process.
Ah, it was prompted externally. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Mr. City Clerk, do we have any public communications for this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No public communications received on this item.
All right, thank you. So we will go ahead and close the public hearing and we can entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of staff's recommendation.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please proceed with the vote.
Okay, on item 12A, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Halter.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Yes.
And Mayor Rubicova.
Yes.
Seven ayes and the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Our next item, we are actually going to look at item 13B before 13A, so we will do 13B at the moment, and that is approve of memorandum of understanding between the city and Service Employees International Union, Local 721, general, professional, and supervisory employees, and adopt revised salary resolutions for unrepresented employees and Service Employees International Union, Local 721, general, professional, and supervisory employees, and adopt a revised benefits resolution for unrepresented employees. And for that, we have our Human Resources Director, Ms. Danielle Keys.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you, I'm Danielle Keys, the Human Resources Director, and I am going to be presenting a few items this evening regarding our memorandum of understanding for SEIU 721, as well as salary and benefits resolution changes for the unrepresented employees. The MOU between the city and the Service Employees International Union 721 is within the authority provided by the City Council and is proposed as follows. This is for a one-year term, starting on July 1st, 2022, running through June 30th of 2023. The proposed increases include a 5% increase of the base salary, a one-time off-schedule lump sum payment equivalent to 1.75% base salary, increase of bilingual pay from $25 to $30 per pay period, and standby pay increasing by $1 per hour effective January 7th, 2023, and a change in deferred compensation, adding a non-matching contribution of $10 per pay period for the general unit, and increasing the non-matching contribution to $10 per pay period for professional and supervisory units, which will bring them all to the same deferred compensation formulas. In addition, they will receive, effective the plan year January 2023, an increase in the city's monthly contributions towards insurance. The employee-only plans will increase by $37, employee-plus-one by $45, and family coverage by $58. In addition, there is other language included to clarify our current practices or emphasize city policies or legal requirements. Those are cost-neutral modifications that are included in our proposal. In addition to SEIU, a compensation package with the council's authority is also proposed for the city's unrepresented employees, which includes executive management, executives, management, confidential, and police-fire recruits. This package, just to note, does not include city manager and city attorney, which will be presented at an upcoming council meeting. The summary of the proposed changes for the unrepresented employees includes a 5% increase to base salary, one-time off-schedule lump sum payment equal to 1.75% of the base salary, adjustment to deferred compensation in the following categories, these are to the non-matching contributions, confidential will increase by $6.19, management by 709, and executive management by 2231. For the management and executive employees, we will also increase the auto allowance by $25 for management and $30 for executive management. In addition to that, the medical, city's medical contributions will change by the following amounts: Police and fire recruits and confidential will have a change to employee-only, there's a slight variation between the two. Employee-only will increase by $68 for police and fire recruits and $50 for confidential. And then for employee-plus-one will increase by $100 and family coverage by $200. For the management and executive management, it will increase by $50 for employee-only, 102 for employee-plus-one, and family coverage will increase by $200. The financial impact to the presented packages, including the pay increases, the lump sum, and all of the additional non-cost neutral changes, comes to a total estimated cost of $3,106,001, $3,106,145. Tonight, the recommendation is for City Council to approve and authorize the city manager to execute on behalf of the city the MOUs between the city and the Service Employee International Union SEIU 721 for the general, professional, and service employees, all three groups, and to adopt and revise, adopt the revised resolutions for the professional, general, and supervisory units with the salary resolution, including the increases to the local 721 SEIU group. This lists the actual resolutions for each of those, professional units, supervisory unit, and also general unit. In addition, it's recommended to adopt a revised resolution for the paid officers of the city. This includes the executives, management, confidential, police, and fire recruits, effective July 9th, 2022. Just of note, again, that excludes city manager and city attorney, those will be brought forward separately. And then to adopt a resolution providing the benefits and additional compensation under the benefits resolution for the unrepresented groups as well. The last recommendation is to authorize the Finance Department to increase general fund appropriation by $293,699 from the city's investment plan to support the balance of the off-schedule lump sum payment referenced in the key proposed components above. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Keys, for the presentation. Do we have any council questions? Do we have any public communications for this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No public communications received.
All right, thank you. Any comments?
I'll move to accept staff's recommendation.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Please proceed with the vote.
Okay, on the motion on item 13B, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Halter.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Yes.
Mayor Rubicova.
Yes.
Seven ayes and the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Keys. And before we take item 13A, we're going to take a short break and we will be back in a few minutes. (audio cuts out)[122.13][122.16](audio cuts out)[123.12][123.15](audio cuts out)[124.11][124.14](audio cuts out)[125.13][125.16](audio cuts out)[126.12][126.15](audio cuts out)[127.11][127.14](audio cuts out)[128.10][128.13](audio cuts out)[129.10][129.13](audio cuts out)[130.06][130.09](audio cuts out)[131.02][131.05](audio cuts out)[132.01][132.04](audio cuts out)[133.00][133.03](audio cuts out)[134.00][134.03](audio cuts out)[135.00][135.03](audio cuts out)[136.00][136.03](audio cuts out)[137.00][137.03](audio cuts out)[138.00][138.03](audio cuts out)[139.00][139.03](audio cuts out)[140.00][140.03](audio cuts out)[141.00][141.03](audio cuts out)[142.00][142.03](audio cuts out)[143.00][143.03](audio cuts out)[144.00][144.03](audio cuts out)[145.00][145.03](audio cuts out)[146.00][146.03](audio cuts out)[147.00][147.03](audio cuts out)[148.00][148.03](audio cuts out)[149.00][149.03](audio cuts out)[150.00][150.03](audio cuts out)[151.00][151.03](audio cuts out)[152.00][152.03](audio cuts out)[153.00][153.03](audio cuts out)[154.00][154.03](audio cuts out)[155.00][155.03](audio cuts out)[156.00][156.03](audio cuts out)[157.00][157.03](audio cuts out)[158.00][158.03](audio cuts out)[159.00][159.03](audio cuts out)[160.00][160.03](audio cuts out)[161.00][161.03](audio cuts out)[162.00][162.03](audio cuts out)[163.00][163.03](audio cuts out)[164.00][164.03](audio cuts out)[165.00][165.03](audio cuts out)[166.00][166.03](audio cuts out)[167.00][167.03](audio cuts out)[168.00][168.03](audio cuts out)[169.00][169.03](audio cuts out)[170.00][170.03](audio cuts out)[171.00][171.03](audio cuts out)[172.00][172.03](audio cuts out)[173.00][173.03](audio cuts out)[174.00][174.03](audio cuts out)[175.00][175.03](audio cuts out)[176.00][176.03](audio cuts out)[177.00][177.03](audio cuts out)[178.00][178.03](audio cuts out)[179.00][179.03](audio cuts out)[180.00][180.03](audio cuts out)[181.00][181.03](audio cuts out)[182.00][182.03](audio cuts out)[183.00][183.03](audio cuts out)[184.00][184.03](audio cuts out)[185.00][185.03](audio cuts out)[186.00][186.03](audio cuts out)[187.00][187.03](audio cuts out)[188.00][188.03](audio cuts out)[189.00][189.03](audio cuts out)[190.00][190.03](audio cuts out)[191.00][191.03](audio cuts out)[192.00][192.03](audio cuts out)[193.00][193.03](audio cuts out)[194.00][194.03](audio cuts out)[195.00][195.03](audio cuts out)[196.00][196.03](audio cuts out)[197.00][197.03](audio cuts out)[198.00][198.03](audio cuts out)[199.00][199.03](audio cuts out)[200.00][200.03](audio cuts out)[201.00][201.03](audio cuts out)[202.00][202.03](audio cuts out)[203.00][203.03](audio cuts out)[204.00][204.03](audio cuts out)[205.00][205.03](audio cuts out)[206.00][206.03](audio cuts out)[207.00][207.03](audio cuts out)[208.00][208.03](audio cuts out)[209.00][209.03](audio cuts out)[210.00][210.03](audio cuts out)[211.00][211.03](audio cuts out)[212.00][212.03](audio cuts out)[213.00][213.03](audio cuts out)[214.00][214.03](audio cuts out)[215.00][215.03](audio cuts out)[216.00][216.03](audio cuts out)[217.00][217.03](audio cuts out)[218.00][218.03](audio cuts out)[219.00][219.03](audio cuts out)[220.00][220.03](audio cuts out)[221.00][221.03](audio cuts out)[222.00][222.03](audio cuts out)[223.00][223.03](audio cuts out)[224.00][224.03](audio cuts out)[225.00][225.03](audio cuts out)[226.00][226.03](audio cuts out)[227.00][227.03](audio cuts out)[228.00][228.03](audio cuts out)[229.00][229.03](audio cuts out)[230.00][230.03](audio cuts out)[231.00][231.03](audio cuts out)[232.00][232.03](audio cuts out)[233.00][233.03](audio cuts out)[234.00][234.03](audio cuts out)[235.00][235.03](audio cuts out)[236.00][236.03](audio cuts out)[237.00][237.03](audio cuts out)[238.00][238.03](audio cuts out)[239.00][239.03](audio cuts out)[240.00][240.03](audio cuts out)[241.00][241.03](audio cuts out)[242.00][242.03](audio cuts out)[243.00][243.03](audio cuts out)[244.00][244.03](audio cuts out)[245.00][245.03](audio cuts out)[246.00][246.03](audio cuts out)[247.00][247.03](audio cuts out)[248.00][248.03](audio cuts out)[249.00][249.03](audio cuts out)[250.00][250.03](audio cuts out)[251.00][251.03](audio cuts out)[252.00][252.03](audio cuts out)[253.00][253.03](audio cuts out)[254.00][254.03](audio cuts out)[255.00][255.03](audio cuts out)[256.00][256.03](audio cuts out)[257.00][257.03](audio cuts out)[258.00][258.03](audio cuts out)[259.00][259.03](audio cuts out)[260.00][260.03](audio cuts out)[261.00][261.03](audio cuts out)[262.00][262.03](audio cuts out)[263.00][263.03](audio cuts out)[264.00][264.03](audio cuts out)[265.00][265.03](audio cuts out)[266.00][266.03](audio cuts out)[267.00][267.03](audio cuts out)[268.00][268.03](audio cuts out)[269.00][269.03](audio cuts out)[270.00][270.03](audio cuts out)[271.00][271.03](audio cuts out)[272.00][272.03](audio cuts out)[273.00][273.03](audio cuts out)[274.00][274.03](audio cuts out)[275.00][275.03](audio cuts out)[276.00][276.03](audio cuts out)[277.00][277.03](audio cuts out)[278.00][278.03](audio cuts out)[279.00][279.03](audio cuts out)[280.00][280.03](audio cuts out)[281.00][281.03](audio cuts out)[282.00][282.03](audio cuts out)[283.00][283.03](audio cuts out)[284.00][284.03](audio cuts out)[285.00][285.03](audio cuts out)[286.00][286.03](audio cuts out)[287.00][287.03](audio cuts out)[288.00][288.03](audio cuts out)[289.00][289.03](audio cuts out)[290.00][290.03](audio cuts out)[291.00][291.03](audio cuts out)[292.00][292.03](audio cuts out)[293.00][293.03](audio cuts out)[294.00][294.03](audio cuts out)[295.00][295.03](audio cuts out)[296.00][296.03](audio cuts out)[297.00][297.03](audio cuts out)[298.00][298.03](audio cuts out)[299.00][299.03](audio cuts out)[300.00][300.03](audio cuts out)[301.00][301.03](audio cuts out)[302.00][302.03](audio cuts out)[303.00][303.03](audio cuts out)[304.00][304.03](audio cuts out)[305.00][305.03](audio cuts out)[306.00][306.03](audio cuts out)[307.00][307.03](audio cuts out)[308.00][308.03](audio cuts out)[309.00][309.03](audio cuts out)[310.00][310.03](audio cuts out)[311.00][311.03](audio cuts out)[312.00][312.03](audio cuts out)[313.00][313.03](audio cuts out)[314.00][314.03](audio cuts out)[315.00][315.03](audio cuts out)[316.00][316.03](audio cuts out)[317.00][317.03](audio cuts out)[318.00][318.03](audio cuts out)[319.00][319.03](audio cuts out)[320.00][320.03](audio cuts out)[321.00][321.03](audio cuts out)[322.00][322.03](audio cuts out)[323.00][323.03](audio cuts out)[324.00][324.03](audio cuts out)[325.00][325.03](audio cuts out)[326.00][326.03](audio cuts out)[327.00][327.03](audio cuts out)[328.00][328.03](audio cuts out)[329.00][329.03](audio cuts out)[330.00][330.03](audio cuts out)[331.00][331.03](audio cuts out)[332.00][332.03](audio cuts out)[333.00][333.03](audio cuts out)[334.00][334.03](audio cuts out)[335.00][335.03](audio cuts out)[336.00][336.03](audio cuts out)[337.00][337.03](audio cuts out)[338.00][338.03](audio cuts out)[339.00][339.03](audio cuts out)[340.00][340.03](audio cuts out)[341.00][341.03](audio cuts out)[342.00][342.03](audio cuts out)[343.00][343.03](audio cuts out)[344.00][344.03](audio cuts out)[345.00][345.03](audio cuts out)[346.00][346.03](audio cuts out)[347.00][347.03](audio cuts out)[348.00][348.03](audio cuts out)[349.00][349.03](audio cuts out)[350.00][350.03](audio cuts out)[351.00][351.03](audio cuts out)[352.00][352.03](audio cuts out)[353.00][353.03](audio cuts out)[354.00][354.03](audio cuts out)[355.00][355.03](audio cuts out)[356.00][356.03](audio cuts out)[357.00][357.03](audio cuts out)[358.00][358.03](audio cuts out)[359.00][359.03](audio cuts out)[360.00][360.03](audio cuts out)[361.00][361.03](audio cuts out)[362.00][362.03](audio cuts out)[363.00][363.03](audio cuts out)[364.00][364.03](audio cuts out)[365.00][365.03](audio cuts out)[366.00][366.03](audio cuts out)[367.00][367.03](audio cuts out)[368.00][368.03](audio cuts out)[369.00][369.03](audio cuts out)[370.00][370.03](audio cuts out)[371.00][371.03](audio cuts out)[372.00][372.03](audio cuts out)[373.00][373.03](audio cuts out)[374.00][374.03](audio cuts out)[375.00][375.03](audio cuts out)[376.00][376.03](audio cuts out)[377.00][377.03](audio cuts out)[378.00][378.03](audio cuts out)[379.00][379.03](audio cuts out)[380.00][380.03](audio cuts out)[381.00][381.03](audio cuts out)[382.00][382.03](audio cuts out)[383.00][383.03](audio cuts out)[384.00][384.03](audio cuts out)[385.00][385.03](audio cuts out)[386.00][386.03](audio cuts out)[387.00][387.03](audio cuts out)[388.00][388.03](audio cuts out)[389.00][389.03](audio cuts out)[390.00][390.03](audio cuts out)[391.00][391.03](audio cuts out)[392.00][392.03](audio cuts out)[393.00][393.03](audio cuts out)[394.00][394.03](audio cuts out)[395.00][395.03](audio cuts out)[396.00][396.03](audio cuts out)[397.00][397.03](audio cuts out)[398.00][398.03](audio cuts out)[399.00][399.03](audio cuts out)[400.00][400.03](audio cuts out)[401.00][401.03](audio cuts out)[402.00][402.03](audio cuts out)[403.00][403.03](audio cuts out)[404.00][404.03](audio cuts out)[405.00][405.03](audio cuts out)[406.00][406.03](audio cuts out)[407.00][407.03](audio cuts out)[408.00][408.03](audio cuts out)[409.00][409.03](audio cuts out)[410.00][410.03](audio cuts out)[411.00][411.03](audio cuts out)[412.00][412.03](audio cuts out)[413.00][413.03](audio cuts out)[414.00][414.03](audio cuts out)[415.00][415.03](audio cuts out)[416.00][416.03](audio cuts out)[417.00][417.03](audio cuts out)[418.00][418.03](audio cuts out)[419.00][419.03](audio cuts out)[420.00][420.03](audio cuts out)[421.00][421.03](audio cuts out)[422.00][422.03](audio cuts out)[423.00][423.03](audio cuts out)[424.00][424.03](audio cuts out)[425.00][425.03](audio cuts out)[426.00][426.03](audio cuts out)[427.00][427.03](audio cuts out)[428.00][428.03](audio cuts out)[429.00][429.03](audio cuts out)[430.00][430.03](audio cuts out)[431.00][431.03](audio cuts out)[432.00][432.03](audio cuts out)[433.00][433.03](audio cuts out)[434.00][434.03](audio cuts out)[435.00][435.03](audio cuts out)[436.00][436.03](audio cuts out)[437.00][437.03](audio cuts out)[438.00][438.03](audio cuts out)[439.00][439.03](audio cuts out)[440.00][440.03](audio cuts out)[441.00][441.03](audio cuts out)[442.00][442.03](audio cuts out)[443.00][443.03](audio cuts out)[444.00][444.03](audio cuts out)[445.00][445.03](audio cuts out)[446.00][446.03](audio cuts out)[447.00][447.03](audio cuts out)[448.00][448.03](audio cuts out)[449.00][449.03](audio cuts out)[450.00][450.03](audio cuts out)[451.00][451.03](audio cuts out)[452.00][452.03](audio cuts out)[453.00][453.03](audio cuts out)[454.00][454.03](audio cuts out)[455.00][455.03](audio cuts out)[456.00][456.03](audio cuts out)[457.00][457.03](audio cuts out)[458.00][458.03](audio cuts out)[459.00][459.03](audio cuts out)[460.00][460.03](audio cuts out)[461.00][461.03](audio cuts out)[462.00][462.03](audio cuts out)[463.00][463.03](audio cuts out)[464.00][464.03](audio cuts out)[465.00][465.03](audio cuts out)[466.00][466.03](audio cuts out)[467.00][467.03](audio cuts out)[468.00][468.03](audio cuts out)[469.00][469.03](audio cuts out)[470.00][470.03](audio cuts out)[471.00][471.03](audio cuts out)[472.00][472.03](audio cuts out)[473.00][473.03](audio cuts out)[474.00][474.03](audio cuts out)[475.00][475.03](audio cuts out)[476.00][476.03](audio cuts out)[477.00][477.03](audio cuts out)[478.00][478.03](audio cuts out)[479.00][479.03](audio cuts out)[480.00][480.03](audio cuts out)[481.00][481.03](audio cuts out)[482.00][482.03](audio cuts out)[483.00][483.03](audio cuts out)[484.00][484.03](audio cuts out)[485.00][485.03](audio cuts out)[486.00][486.03](audio cuts out)[487.00][487.03](audio cuts out)[488.00][488.03](audio cuts out)[489.00][489.03](audio cuts out)[490.00][490.03](audio cuts out)[491.00][491.03](audio cuts out)[492.00][492.03](audio cuts out)[493.00][493.03](audio cuts out)[494.00][494.03](audio cuts out)[495.00][495.03](audio cuts out)[496.00][496.03](audio cuts out)[497.00][497.03](audio cuts out)[498.00][498.03](audio cuts out)[499.00][499.03](audio cuts out)[500.00][500.03](audio cuts out)[501.00][501.03](audio cuts out)[502.00][502.03](audio cuts out)[503.00][503.03](audio cuts out)[504.00][504.03](audio cuts out)[505.00][505.03](audio cuts out)[506.00][506.03](audio cuts out)[507.00][507.03](audio cuts out)[508.00][508.03](audio cuts out)[509.00][509.03](audio cuts out)[510.00][510.03](audio cuts out)[511.00][511.03](audio cuts out)[512.00][512.03](audio cuts out)[513.00][513.03](audio cuts out)[514.00][514.03](audio cuts out)[515.00][515.03](audio cuts out)[516.00][516.03](audio cuts out)[517.00][517.03](audio cuts out)[518.00][518.03](audio cuts out)[519.00][519.03](audio cuts out)[520.00][520.03](audio cuts out)[521.00][521.03](audio cuts out)[522.00][522.03](audio cuts out)[523.00][523.03](audio cuts out)[524.00][524.03](audio cuts out)[525.00][525.03](audio cuts out)[526.00][526.03](audio cuts out)[527.00][527.03](audio cuts out)[528.00][528.03](audio cuts out)[529.00][529.03](audio cuts out)[530.00][530.03](audio cuts out)[531.00][531.03](audio cuts out)[532.00][532.03](audio cuts out)[533.00][533.03](audio cuts out)[534.00][534.03](audio cuts out)[535.00][535.03](audio cuts out)[536.00][536.03](audio cuts out)[537.00][537.03](audio cuts out)[538.00][538.03](audio cuts out)[539.00][539.03](audio cuts out)[540.00][540.03](audio cuts out)[541.00][541.03](audio cuts out)[542.00][542.03](audio cuts out)[543.00][543.03](audio cuts out)[544.00][544.03](audio cuts out)[545.00][545.03](audio cuts out)[546.00][546.03](audio cuts out)[547.00][547.03](audio cuts out)[548.00][548.03](audio cuts out)[549.00][549.03](audio cuts out)[550.00][550.03](audio cuts out)[551.00][551.03](audio cuts out)[552.00][552.03](audio cuts out)[553.00][553.03](audio cuts out)[554.00][554.03](audio cuts out)[555.00][555.03](audio cuts out)[556.00][556.03](audio cuts out)[557.00][557.03](audio cuts out)[558.00][558.03](audio cuts out)[559.00][559.03](audio cuts out)[560.00][560.03](audio cuts out)[561.00][561.03](audio cuts out)[562.00][562.03](audio cuts out)[563.00][563.03](audio cuts out)[564.00][564.03](audio cuts out)[565.00][565.03](audio cuts out)[566.00][566.03](audio cuts out)[567.00][567.03](audio cuts out)[568.00][568.03](audio cuts out)[569.00][569.03](audio cuts out)[570.00][570.03](audio cuts out)[571.00][571.03](audio cuts out)[572.00][572.03](audio cuts out)[573.00][573.03](audio cuts out)[574.00][574.03](audio cuts out)[575.00][575.03](audio cuts out)[576.00][576.03](audio cuts out)[577.00][577.03](audio cuts out)[578.00][578.03](audio cuts out)[579.00][579.03](audio cuts out)[580.00][580.03](audio cuts out)[581.00][581.03](audio cuts out)[582.00][582.03](audio cuts out)[583.00][583.03](audio cuts out)[584.00][584.03](audio cuts out)[585.00][585.03](audio cuts out)[586.00][586.03](audio cuts out)[587.00][587.03](audio cuts out)[588.00][588.03](audio cuts out)[589.00][589.03](audio cuts out)[590.00][590.03](audio cuts out)[591.00][591.03](audio cuts out)[592.00][592.03](audio cuts out)[593.00][593.03](audio cuts out)[594.00][594.03](audio cuts out)[595.00][595.03](audio cuts out)[596.00][596.03](audio cuts out)[597.00][597.03](audio cuts out)[598.00][598.03](audio cuts out)[599.00][599.03](audio cuts out)[600.00][600.03](audio cuts out)[601.00][601.03](audio cuts out)[602.00][602.03](audio cuts out)[603.00][603.03](audio cuts out)[604.00][604.03](audio cuts out)[605.00][605.03](audio cuts out)[606.00][606.03](audio cuts out)[607.00][607.03](audio cuts out)[608.00][608.03](audio cuts out)[609.00][609.03](audio cuts out)[610.00][610.03](audio cuts out)[611.00][611.03](audio cuts out)[612.00][612.03](audio cuts out)[613.00][613.03](audio cuts out)[614.00][614.03](audio cuts out)[615.00][615.03](audio cuts out)[616.00][616.03](audio cuts out)[617.00][617.03](audio cuts out)[618.00][618.03](audio cuts out)[619.00][619.03](audio cuts out)[620.00][620.03](audio cuts out)[621.00][621.03](audio cuts out)[622.00][622.03](audio cuts out)[623.00][623.03](audio cuts out)[624.00][624.03](audio cuts out)[625.00][625.03](audio cuts out)[626.00][626.03](audio cuts out)[627.00][627.03](audio cuts out)[628.00][628.03](audio cuts out)[629.00][629.03](audio cuts out)[630.00][630.03](audio cuts out)[631.00][631.03](audio cuts out)[632.00][632.03](audio cuts out)[633.00][633.03](audio cuts out)[634.00][634.03](audio cuts out)[635.00][635.03](audio cuts out)[636.00][636.03](audio cuts out)[637.00][637.03](audio cuts out)[638.00][638.03](audio cuts out)[639.00][639.03](audio cuts out)[640.00][640.03](audio cuts out)[641.00][641.03](audio cuts out)[642.00][642.03](audio cuts out)[643.00][643.03](audio cuts out)[644.00][644.03](audio cuts out)[645.00][645.03](audio cuts out)[646.00][646.03](audio cuts out)[647.00][647.03](audio cuts out)[648.00][648.03](audio cuts out)[649.00][649.03](audio cuts out)[650.00][650.03](audio cuts out)[651.00][651.03](audio cuts out)[652.00][652.03](audio cuts out)[653.00][653.03](audio cuts out)[654.00][654.03](audio cuts out)[655.00][655.03](audio cuts out)[656.00][656.03](audio cuts out)[657.00][657.03](audio cuts out)[658.00][658.03](audio cuts out)[659.00][659.03](audio cuts out)[660.00][660.03](audio cuts out)[661.00][661.03](audio cuts out)[662.00][662.03](audio cuts out)[663.00][663.03](audio cuts out)[664.00][664.03](audio cuts out)[665.00][665.03](audio cuts out)[666.00][666.03](audio cuts out)[667.00][667.03](audio cuts out)[668.00][668.03](audio cuts out)[669.00][669.03](audio cuts out)[670.00][670.03](audio cuts out)[671.00][671.03](audio cuts out)[672.00][672.03](audio cuts out)[673.00][673.03](audio cuts out)[674.00][674.03](audio cuts out)[675.00][675.03](audio cuts out)[676.00][676.03](audio cuts out)[677.00][677.03](audio cuts out)[678.00][678.03](audio cuts out)[679.00][679.03](audio cuts out)[680.00][680.03](audio cuts out)[681.00][681.03](audio cuts out)[682.00][682.03](audio cuts out)[683.00][683.03](audio cuts out)[684.00][684.03](audio cuts out)[685.00][685.03](audio cuts out)[686.00][686.03](audio cuts out)[687.00][687.03](audio cuts out)[688.00][688.03](audio cuts out)[689.00][689.03](audio cuts out)[690.00][690.03](audio cuts out)[691.00][691.03](audio cuts out)[692.00][692.03](audio cuts out)[693.00][693.03](audio cuts out)[694.00][694.03](audio cuts out)[695.00][695.03](audio cuts out)[696.00][696.03](audio cuts out)[697.00][697.03](audio cuts out)[698.00][698.03](audio cuts out)[699.00][699.03](audio cuts out)[700.00][700.03](audio cuts out)[701.00][701.03](audio cuts out)[702.00][702.03](audio cuts out)[703.00][703.03](audio cuts out)[704.00][704.03](audio cuts out)[705.00][705.03](audio cuts out)[706.00][706.03](audio cuts out)[707.00][707.03](audio cuts out)[708.00][708.03](audio cuts out)[709.00][709.03](audio cuts out)[710.00][710.03](audio cuts out)[711.00][711.03](audio cuts out)[712.00][712.03](audio cuts out)[713.00][713.03](audio cuts out)[714.00][714.03](audio cuts out)[715.00][715.03](audio cuts out)[716.00][716.03](audio cuts out)[717.00][717.03](audio cuts out)[718.00][718.03](audio cuts out)[719.00][719.03](audio cuts out)[720.00][720.03](audio cuts out)[721.00][721.03](audio cuts out)[722.00][722.03](audio cuts out)[723.00][723.03](audio cuts out)[724.00][724.03](audio cuts out)[725.00][725.03](audio cuts out)[726.00][726.03](audio cuts out)[727.00][727.03](audio cuts out)[728.00][728.03](audio cuts out)[729.00][729.03](audio cuts out)[730.00][730.03](audio cuts out)[731.00][731.03](audio cuts out)[732.00][732.03](audio cuts out)[733.00][733.03](audio cuts out)[734.00][734.03](audio cuts out)[735.00][735.03](audio cuts out)[736.00][736.03](audio cuts out)[737.00][737.03](audio cuts out)[738.00][738.03](audio cuts out)[739.00][739.03](audio cuts out)[740.00][740.03](audio cuts out)[741.00][741.03](audio cuts out)[742.00][742.03](audio cuts out)[743.00][743.03](audio cuts out)[744.00][744.03](audio cuts out)[745.00][745.03](audio cuts out)[746.00][746.03](audio cuts out)[747.00][747.03](audio cuts out)[748.00][748.03](audio cuts out)[749.00][749.03](audio cuts out)[750.00][750.03](audio cuts out)[751.00][751.03](audio cuts out)[752.00][752.03](audio cuts out)[753.00][753.03](audio cuts out)[754.00][754.03](audio cuts out)[755.00][755.03](audio cuts out)[756.00][756.03](audio cuts out)[757.00][757.03](audio cuts out)[758.00][758.03](audio cuts out)[759.00][759.03](audio cuts out)[760.00][760.03](audio cuts out)[761.00][761.03](audio cuts out)[762.00][762.03](audio cuts out)[763.00][763.03](audio cuts out)[764.00][764.03](audio cuts out)[765.00][765.03](audio cuts out)[766.00][766.03](audio cuts out)[767.00][767.03](audio cuts out)[768.00][768.03](audio cuts out)[769.00][769.03](audio cuts out)[770.00][770.03](audio cuts out)[771.00][771.03](audio cuts out)[772.00][772.03](audio cuts out)[773.00][773.03](audio cuts out)[774.00][774.03](audio cuts out)[775.00][775.03](audio cuts out)[776.00][776.03](audio cuts out)[777.00][777.03](audio cuts out)[778.00][778.03](audio cuts out)[779.00][779.03](audio cuts out)[780.00][780.03](audio cuts out)[781.00][781.03](audio cuts out)[782.00][782.03](audio cuts out)[783.00][783.03](audio cuts out)[784.00][784.03](audio cuts out)[785.00][785.03](audio cuts out)[786.00][786.03](audio cuts out)[787.00][787.03](audio cuts out)[788.00][788.03](audio cuts out)[789.00][789.03](audio cuts out)[790.00][790.03](audio cuts out)[791.00][791.03](audio cuts out)[792.00][792.03](audio cuts out)[793.00][793.03](audio cuts out)[794.00][794.03](audio cuts out)[795.00][795.03](audio cuts out)[796.00][796.03](audio cuts out)[797.00][797.03](audio cuts out)[798.00][798.03](audio cuts out)[799.00][799.03](audio cuts out)[800.00][800.03](audio cuts out)[801.00][801.03](audio cuts out)[802.00][802.03](audio cuts out)[803.00][803.03](audio cuts out)[804.00][804.03](audio cuts out)[805.00][805.03](audio cuts out)[806.00][806.03](audio cuts out)[807.00][807.03](audio cuts out)[808.00][808.03](audio cuts out)[809.00][809.03](audio cuts out)[810.00][810.03](audio cuts out)[811.00][811.03](audio cuts out)[812.00][812.03](audio cuts out)[813.00][813.03](audio cuts out)[814.00][814.03](audio cuts out)[815.00][815.03](audio cuts out)[816.00][816.03](audio cuts out)[817.00][817.03](audio cuts out)[818.00][818.03](audio cuts out)[819.00][819.03](audio cuts out)[820.00][820.03](audio cuts out)[821.00][821.03](audio cuts out)[822.00][822.03](audio cuts out)[823.00][823.03](audio cuts out)[824.00][824.03](audio cuts out)[825.00][825.03](audio cuts out)[826.00][826.03](audio cuts out)[827.00][827.03](audio cuts out)[828.00][828.03](audio cuts out)[829.00][829.03](audio cuts out)[830.00][830.03](audio cuts out)[831.00][831.03](audio cuts out)[832.00][832.03](audio cuts out)[833.00][833.03](audio cuts out)[834.00][834.03](audio cuts out)[835.00][835.03](audio cuts out)[836.00][836.03](audio cuts out)[837.00][837.03](audio cuts out)[838.00][838.03](audio cuts out)[839.00][839.03](audio cuts out)[840.00][840.03](audio cuts out)[841.00][841.03](audio cuts out)[842.00][842.03](audio cuts out)[843.00][843.03](audio cuts out)[844.00][844.03](audio cuts out)[845.00][845.03](audio cuts out)[846.00][846.03](audio cuts out)[847.00][847.03](audio cuts out)[848.00][848.03](audio cuts out)[849.00][849.03](audio cuts out)[850.00][850.03](audio cuts out)[851.00][851.03](audio cuts out)[852.00][852.03](audio cuts out)[853.00][853.03](audio cuts out)[854.00][854.03](audio cuts out)[855.00][855.03](audio cuts out)[856.00][856.03](audio cuts out)[857.00][857.03](audio cuts out)[858.00][858.03](audio cuts out)[859.00][859.03](audio cuts out)[860.00][860.03](audio cuts out)[861.00][861.03](audio cuts out)[862.00][862.03](audio cuts out)[863.00][863.03](audio cuts out)[864.00][864.03](audio cuts out)[865.00][865.03](audio cuts out)[866.00][866.03](audio cuts out)[867.00][867.03](audio cuts out)[868.00][868.03](audio cuts out)[869.00][869.03](audio cuts out)[870.00][870.03](audio cuts out)[871.00][871.03](audio cuts out)[872.00][872.03](audio cuts out)[873.00][873.03](audio cuts out)[874.00][874.03](audio cuts out)[875.00][875.03](audio cuts out)[876.00][876.03](audio cuts out)[877.00][877.03](audio cuts out)[878.00][878.03](audio cuts out)[879.00][879.03](audio cuts out)[880.00][880.03](audio cuts out)[881.00][881.03](audio cuts out)[882.00][882.03](audio cuts out)[883.00][883.03](audio cuts out)[884.00][884.03](audio cuts out)[885.00][885.03](audio cuts out)[886.00][886.03](audio cuts out)[887.00][887.03](audio cuts out)[888.00][888.03](audio cuts out)[889.00][889.03](audio cuts out)[890.00][890.03](audio cuts out)[891.00][891.03](audio cuts out)[892.00][892.03](audio cuts out)[893.00][893.03](audio cuts out)[894.00][894.03](audio cuts out)[895.00][895.03](audio cuts out)[896.00][896.03](audio cuts out)[897.00][897.03](audio cuts out)[898.00][898.03](audio cuts out)[899.00][899.03](audio cuts out)[900.00][900.03](audio cuts out)[901.00][901.03](audio cuts out)[902.00][902.03](audio cuts out)[903.00][903.03](audio cuts out)[904.00][904.03](audio cuts out)[905.00][905.03](audio cuts out)[906.00][906.03](audio cuts out)[907.00][907.03](audio cuts out)[908.00][908.03](audio cuts out)[909.00][909.03](audio cuts out)[910.00][910.03](audio cuts out)[911.00][911.03](audio cuts out)[912.00][912.03](audio cuts out)[913.00][913.03](audio cuts out)[914.00][914.03](audio cuts out)[915.00][915.03](audio cuts out)[916.00][916.03](audio cuts out)[917.00][917.03](audio cuts out)[918.00][918.03](audio cuts out)[919.00][919.03](audio cuts out)[920.00][920.03](audio cuts out)[921.00][921.03](audio cuts out)[922.00][922.03](audio cuts out)[923.00][923.03](audio cuts out)[924.00][924.03](audio cuts out)[925.00][925.03](audio cuts out)[926.00][926.03](audio cuts out)[927.00][927.03](audio cuts out)[928.00][928.03](audio cuts out)[929.00][929.03](audio cuts out)[930.00][930.03](audio cuts out)[931.00][931.03](audio cuts out)[932.00][932.03](audio cuts out)[933.00][933.03](audio cuts out)[934.00][934.03](audio cuts out)[935.00][935.03](audio cuts out)[936.00][936.03](audio cuts out)[937.00][937.03](audio cuts out)[938.00][938.03](audio cuts out)[939.00][939.03](audio cuts out)[940.00][940.03](audio cuts out)[941.00][941.03](audio cuts out)[942.00][942.03](audio cuts out)[943.00][943.03](audio cuts out)[944.00][944.03](audio cuts out)[945.00][945.03](audio cuts out)[946.00][946.03](audio cuts out)[947.00][947.03](audio cuts out)[948.00][948.03](audio cuts out)[949.00][949.03](audio cuts out)[950.00][950.03](audio cuts out)[951.00][951.03](audio cuts out)[952.00][952.03](audio cuts out)[953.00][953.03](audio cuts out)[954.00][954.03](audio cuts out)[955.00][955.03](audio cuts out)[956.00][956.03](audio cuts out)[957.00][957.03](audio cuts out)[958.00][958.03](audio cuts out)[959.00][959.03](audio cuts out)[960.00][960.03](audio cuts out)[961.00][961.03](audio cuts out)[962.00][962.03](audio cuts out)[963.00][963.03](audio cuts out)[964.00][964.03](audio cuts out)[965.00][965.03](audio cuts out)[966.00][966.03](audio cuts out)[967.00][967.03](audio cuts out)[968.00][968.03](audio cuts out)
All right, welcome back, everybody. Now we have our item 13A. We have a progress report on the general plan update, climate action and resiliency plan, and energy action plan. And for that, we have our department members here. We have a council member, Brown, who's going to give the introduction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to quickly say this agenda item covers two interrelated subjects. So first, the general plan update, for which Doug and I have been actively involved in as part of the G-PAC. And second, the environmental sustainability efforts the city is currently undertaking. Both will have community engagement during this summer, and I felt important to provide a brief introduction to this general plan update. So in March, council did endorse a vision statement with guiding principles and strategies that culminated a year of community engagement and G-PAC efforts. Now, the next step is to develop land use alternatives for the physical form of the city based upon the vision. So Matt Ramey of Ramey &amp; Associates will briefly explain the opportunities for these alternatives to be developed. And we want to share this with the entire council and the community as a whole because, as we all know, there are members of the community that want more housing and jobs, and there are members concerned with growth. And just as the public opinion poll presented at the beginning of this meeting, every survey and study say the same thing. And the most recent survey that presented today indicates by way of Timothy McLarnie of the True North Research, that per 1,000 of our residents, that our residents desire that we, the city, intentionally address housing affordability and strategies to find solution for unhoused populations. In the form of land use designation, all alternatives, we can work towards this effort. It speaks volumes that the survey not only supports our general direction, but it also lines up with the opportunity for us to effectively plan for Ventura's future sustainably through the general plan as a policy document. It's important that we establish a thoughtful way to continue to invest in specific strategies and the land use designation alternatives ultimately surveyed by the general plan community consultants presents us with the opportunity to do exactly that. And this plan driver directly addresses the various issues most important to our residents in a policy document that will guide city planning for the next 20 or 30 years. So, having said all that, the alternatives presented tonight were meant to generate dialogue and ideas so that our dialogue as council members would be informed as a city council, and because our thoughts and inputs are important as the community. So after significant community input, G-PAC input, and the Planning Commission's recommendation, Matt Ramey, the lead consultant, will describe the process and summary of responses for land use designations, alternatives, and he will request that this council to decide upon the preferred land use direction. If city council endorses this approach, then the general plan team will continue to move the general plan forward by building strategies to establish these alternatives. And this will be brought back to us again even after tonight, once there's a general consensus, I believe. Is that correct? Yes, that's correct. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and pass this discussion on to Matt and Neda. And as they are preparing to come, I also wanted to quickly thank Peter Gilli earlier for coming up to respond to constituent concerns this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's great to see you all again. I'm Matt Ramey with Ramey &amp; Associates, and I'm going to provide just a brief presentation. What we are going to talk about tonight, as Councilmember Brown said, is an update on the general plan and an overview of our approach to the land use alternatives. We're still developing the alternatives. We're going to go to the public and then come back to the council later. We're going to provide a quick overview of what the Climate Action and Resilience Plan, or CARP, is, and an overview of the Energy Action Plan. I'm going to start with a brief overview of the general plan, and this is a review for many of you. The general plan is a long-term policy document that guides the future actions of the city. It enables the community to come together to develop a shared vision for the next 25 to 30 years. It's updated regularly, about every 10 to 15 years. Two main points of the general plan are to preserve and enhance the great things about the community, as well as to address topics of concern. There are nine required elements, as you see here. Tonight, we're going to be focusing primarily on topics of the land use element. The general plan update process involves six major steps that you see here: discovery, visioning, alternatives, policy development, plan development, and then review and adoption. So far, we are through the first two steps of discovery and visioning. And as Councilmember Brown said, this council endorsed the vision, guiding principles, and key strategies at the council meeting on March 28th. We're now in the phase of developing alternatives and thinking about policy approaches to address a range of topics. And this work's going to be going on over the next six months. From there, we'll have a draft plan and then review and adopt the plan at some point in 2023. Throughout all of this process is going to be significant community engagement. To date, we have spent a lot of time on outreach and engagement. This is a summary slide that was presented at the last meeting, but we have, just to remind the council and members of the public, we have a project website that's updated regularly. We have posted and let people know about the general plan in newsletters and on social media. We've had videos on YouTube that have over 2,000 impressions. We've done advertising all throughout the city, and really, a lot of this work is done by the city's communications team. We've also had quite a large number of community engagement efforts to date. We've had 13 general plan advisory committee meetings. We've had since our last meeting with the council, we've actually met in person with the general plan advisory committee, which was great to be in person. We've had five educational forums, a community workshop. We've gone to the community councils two times, and we're planning on going again in the fall. We've had pop-up workshops, stakeholder interviews, multiple council meetings, boards and commission meetings, and then three community surveys. So we have spent a lot of time out in the community. We've talked to many, many people, but there still are clearly many more who we need to speak with. Now, I'm going to shift gears a little bit and provide an overview of the land use alternatives process. This is the phase of work where we look at how we can develop land use and growth alternatives that meet the vision for the city. And I want to give you an overview of this process now. So land use alternatives are really a critical part of the general plan update. They're a critical part of any general plan update. And the purpose is to ensure that there is sufficient capacity for the evolution of the city, the evolution of the physical form of the city over the next 25 to 30 years. The underlying assumption with the land use alternatives is that cities are not static places. Cities evolve over time to reflect new market realities, changes in demographics, in-migration and out-migration of residents, demographic shifts, and other factors. Generally speaking, for a city, if you're not moving forward, you're moving backwards. So during the land use alternatives process, the goal is to test different land use and design patterns and to understand trade-offs between those patterns. This is really in response to making sure that we are implementing the vision and the guiding principles that we spent a year with the community developing, and it's so we can make informed choices about the future of the city. The path to land use alternatives actually started about a year ago. We had a meeting with the general plan advisory committee doing an identification of areas that could change in the city and areas of stability. So we asked, where would growth go and where would you like to see no growth happening at all? We then had a vision survey in the fall of 2021, and we again asked the question of where should development go? And this was a map-based survey that gave us a lot of information about ideas about the evolution of the city. We, in November and December, we finalized the areas of discussion and reviewed a citywide framework for how the evolution could occur. Then, in April and May, we had three general plan advisory committee meetings that occurred over about eight hours over those three nights, where the G-PAC worked in small groups to generate ideas for the different areas of discussion that were identified. Currently, we're in the process of developing and analyzing land use alternatives. And then, from there, we're going to go take those ideas, those different concepts, out to the community to have them review and provide feedback. This information, the results, will then go to the general plan advisory committee, and then it will go to the Planning Commission and then City Council, who will review and select the preferred land use direction. It's important to note that the purpose, one of the purposes of the land use alternatives is to implement the vision. And the vision, if you'll remember, consisted of three components. It was a vision statement, core values, and then key strategies. What you see on the screen here is a number of the key strategies that relate directly to land use decisions. And these are ideas, these are concepts, and they can manifest themselves in different ways for the city, for land use decisions. And so the purpose of the land use alternatives is to explore the different ways that these ideas can be put in the physical form of the city to get feedback on those ideas. So some of the concepts, the strategies, are to enhance neighborhoods with infill development. Infill came up a lot. Strengthen the downtown. There's a lot of discussion about commercial corridors, to transform commercial corridors, expand the number and diversity of housing units. We saw that with the True North survey earlier. Develop around transit. Add retail services and housing to East Ventura. Expand employment, so there's a balance of jobs and housing. Protect open spaces. And then a number of topics that are tangentially related to, directly to, land use and development, but reducing greenhouse gas emissions through land use decisions. Reducing air pollution, avoiding wildfire and sea level rise areas. SLR is sea level rise. And then increasing walking, biking, and transit. As I mentioned, the input for the alternatives came over a year, but really focused on a couple of key points. So one was the general plan advisory committee meetings in April and May. And again, there were three meetings. We worked together, the G-PAC worked together in small groups, and you can see the images up here on the right, and our two council members who are G-PAC representatives, I had to put you up on the slide here. So the G-PAC worked together in groups to explore ideas for each of these areas of discussion. They could put sticky notes down with their ideas. They could put images of different land use types in different areas, and that's how we got those, some of the ideas for the alternatives. Parallel to these meetings, over, you know, the eight hours of meetings, we had tables set up outside in the hallway here, and the members of the public were invited to actually do the same exercises as well. And we got probably thousands of comments and ideas from the public for this. So again, there was, you know, seven or eight hours of time where the public was interacting with each other, interacting with maps, and interacting with the consultant team and staff on their ideas. And there are some images of that down here as well. The visioning survey last fall also gave us a lot of information. We presented this to the council previously. An image on the lower right here is what's called a heat map, which shows more intensity of dots on the map based on the public feedback. This one here shows where the community said new mixed-use development should be located in the city. And so that gave us a lot of ideas for the alternatives. And then throughout the entire process, there was, community members expressed ideas about areas that should change and areas that should stay the same. An important consideration when thinking about land use alternatives is what we call development projections. This, we know, is a, can be a challenging and touchy topic, as was mentioned previously, because people want more housing, they want more affordable housing, and yet there's concerns about growth. So, but in the general plan, we need to identify an amount of development that can be accommodated within the time horizon of the general plan. And so development projections are the maximum anticipated new development during that time horizon. It's identified as jobs and housing units. These are used to evaluate environmental impacts in the environmental impact report. They are not statements of policy. They are not growth limits that are put into the general plan. But they really are a framework for us to identify how much land is needed to accommodate the development projections, how much potentially developable land. As we know, most of the city is built out, and so not every parcel, most of the parcels are actually not going to change over the time horizon of the general plan. The, what we are proposing for the development projections for the general plan update for residential development is two to three times the RENA cycle, or regional housing needs allocation. The current RENA cycle had 5,300 units, and so what we're proposing is that we look at accommodating amount of development somewhere in the range of 10,600 to 15,900 units. Non-residential development is actually dependent on the residential growth. Right now, there's 1.39 jobs per housing units, and then what we are proposing is to essentially keep that same ratio. So trying to make sure that there is enough space for job increases of what amounts to 14,000 or 15,000, about 22,000 jobs. This accounts for about, it's about 6 million to 9 million square feet, depending on the use that is selected. And so this is what we are proposing for the development projections for the general plan update. Doing something that is essentially two to three times the RENA cycle and a commensurate number of jobs is pretty standard practice in the planning profession. We're looking 30 years out. That's about three and a half RENA cycles, and we're looking at two to three RENA cycles. And the reason we want to look that far out is so that we don't have to, in eight years, go and try and go through the whole update process and land use process again. We're not going to present land use alternatives tonight. These are going to go to the public first, but the land use alternatives are going to explore patterns, uses, and density of development that will be able to achieve the growth projections. So it's important that we get a sort of a broad range of the growth projections because we're looking at how that growth can be accommodated in different areas of the city and at different intensities. We're going to look at three very broad alternatives, three citywide alternatives. One of those alternatives is going to try and focus the development and the change on really the core area of the west side, not as much on the west side, but really the downtown, the corridors, the mall area, and the area south of 101 for non-residential. The second one is going to be an expansion-focused alternative. There was definitely a lot of discussion at the G-PAC meetings about whether the city, the city sore areas that are within the sphere of influence and more under the city's control, whether those should be considered for development in the time horizon of the general plan. In fact, the groups that divided were about 50/50 on that. And so one of the alternatives will look at what happens if we develop some of those areas? What would they look like? How much development could accommodate? And then what would the impact of that be? And then we're going to look at one that is, we call it distributed, but it's really a hybrid of the two of those. Within each of these alternatives, we're going to be looking at different geographic sub-areas, such as the downtown or the midtown corridors. And so each one of those sub-areas, within each of these alternatives, is going to explore different things. And so what we think is, and this is, pretty much has happened with every plan we've worked on, is that the preferred land use plan that comes out of this is going to be a combination of all three. There's going to be a little bit of picking and choosing of ideas from the different alternatives. That's what we would expect. It's not about picking one, just one. It's about really looking at the differences and looking at what the city wants to achieve. As part of this, we, once we have the alternatives, we will do an evaluation of the alternatives, and we'll do our best to tie the metrics to the values and the strategies that were identified in the vision. These are some of the metrics, including dwelling units, jobs, VMT, which is vehicle miles traveled, greenhouse gas emissions, access to retail and services, access to parks and open spaces, housing and jobs in environmentally sensitive area, fiscal impacts and benefits, access to transit and mode share, which is the share of different transportation modes. You're going to, we're going to get graphs similar to the ones that we see here on the right side of the screen. These are just example graphs. Clearly, the land use alternatives relate to other topics in the general plan, and land use in general relates to these other topics. We need to understand the direction of land use before we can begin to dig into some of these other topics. They include parks and open spaces, transportation and mobility, economic development, wildfire protection, climate change, and sea level rise. To some degree, some of these topics are really dependent on the land use direction that we're choosing. So these will be coming up in the future. The next steps in the process are, after the alternatives are developed, is community engagement, which will occur late summer in the fall. We're going to produce an alternatives workbook, which will have information on the alternatives. We'll have a public workshop or open house, pop-up workshops, an online survey. We're going to go out to the community councils, and we're going to have meetings with other stakeholder groups. I'm now going to turn it over to Neda to do a brief introduction on the CARP.
Yes, so moving from the general plan update to the Climate Action Resilience Plan, also known as the CARP, and then the Energy Action Plan, also known as the EAP. Recently, council received a presentation on electric reach codes, as well as at several council meetings, there have been speakers that have been asking or urging council to address climate change. This actually has been a council goal, the previous council, as well as the current council, to study and look at this. And the CARP and the EAP is a result of those council goals. And so Matt's going to give a high-level overview of the Climate Action and Resilience Plan, including what is a CARP and what the next steps are that also include public engagement. We are talking about both these documents together because they are so interrelated. And the Energy Action Plan has actually been a wonderful tool that the Public Works Department, particularly Joe Yanner and his team, have put together that have fed the foundation of the Climate Action Resilience Plan. And so the goal is to go through public engagement of those two topics hand in hand, and then adoption of those two plans hand in hand through city council, since they are such important topics that relate to one another. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt, who will give an overview, and then Joe will wrap up the presentation on the EAP.
Thank you. So I'm going to start with just a question of what is a Climate Action and Resilience Plan, or CARP. Unlike a general plan, which is a long-term, 30-plus-year document, the Climate Action and Resilience Plan really focuses on shorter term. It's a short-range document that looks at both how the city can change its climate impact and then how to respond to changes that are coming due to climate change. So it establishes a shared vision for what that climate action is, and it really builds on all of the work that's being done on the general plan, the Energy Action Plan, the Active Transportation Plan, and the Hazard Mitigation Plan. The city's already been doing quite a bit related to sustainability and climate, and it's going to, also, it's going to take that information, but also incorporate some new and innovative practices and ideas. And just a note that it's actually funded through a state Prop 84 grant, or partially funded through a Prop 80, 84 grant, Prop 84 grant. The, I want to just clarify a few terms here about what is mitigation and what is adaptation. Mitigation are actions that are taken to reduce or curb greenhouse gas emissions. As we know, greenhouse gas emissions, or GHG, are the byproduct of fossil fuels, and they are leading to an increase in the temperature of the earth's atmosphere, which then has other problems, leads to other problems. And so the mitigation is the steps that the city takes to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions that it's responsible for. Adaptation is actions to reduce the vulnerability to the effects of climate change. We know that there are effects that are going to be happening and that are already happening from climate change. There's going to be sea level rise, there's going to be more extreme heat events, more extreme weather events, more wildfires, and we know that we have to take steps to adapt to that. So mitigation attends to the causes of climate change, and adaptation addresses the impacts. There are essentially two related but distinct functions for the CARP, the Climate Adaptation and Resilience Plan. First, it acts as the city's greenhouse gas reduction program. So there is an inventory of the current greenhouse gas emissions reductions, which has already been completed. And then the CARP will assess the effectiveness of different measures that can be taken in order to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions that the city is responsible for. So that's one part of the function of the CARP. The other part is to define the climate adaptation measures that are consistent with the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So the CARP is going to describe the likely climate changes that are happening within the city and identify potential vulnerabilities from climate hazards. It will also define specific policies and actions that the city can use to address those vulnerabilities. There is a lot of technical synthesis and analysis that is happening as part of the CARP. First is the community-wide greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which I mentioned, and this is a summary of greenhouse gas emissions produced in Ventura in 2019, and this is compared to GHG emissions from the 2010 baseline. These emissions are then forecast through 2050, and we look at a business as usual. If we just keep going the way we're going, what will the greenhouse gas emissions be? And then we adjust that business as usual, or BAU, scenario to incorporate different strategies. We pull different policy levers and see what impact that has on greenhouse gas emissions reductions. And so that's what the second part is, which is the reduction analysis. We, and we go through and we quantify how we can reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. Then the third is the climate hazards existing conditions work. And so what we're looking at is what are the changes and the impacts that are going to be happening because of climate change? And we're also going to do and have completed a vulnerability assessment, which includes social vulnerability. It's important to note that not everyone is actually able to adapt to climate change in the same way, and this actually becomes an equity issue as well. So what's next with the Climate Action Plan, and this was the CARP, which was mentioned earlier, is we have workshops coming up next week on the 20th and 21st that will be in the atrium of City Hall. There will be open houses, so people can stop by as they want, look at interactive boards, talk to staff and the consultants, and share their ideas about how to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. They'll also be able to see some of the results of the analysis. We're going to have continued engagement in August, and we're going to summarize the engagement input. We are then, in the fall, very early fall, going to prepare and release the public review draft of the CARP, gather feedback on that, and then in the fall, it will come, fall or winter, the CARP will come back to you for consideration. Ultimately, the CARP is going to be included as part of the general plan update process. We're going to elevate some of the overall direction of goals and policies and strategies into the general plan, and then the CARP will focus on that, really, that three-to-10-year period of implementation. It is very implementation-focused. So again, just highlighting that the upcoming events next week are in the City Hall atrium, July 20th and 21st. We're also launching a community survey, which has some of the same questions, a lot of the same questions, as what's going to be happening at the open house public workshop next week. Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Matt. So as Matt discussed, the Energy Action Plan, which is completed in a draft form, will be used to support the Climate Action Resilience Plan, which will be completed later this year, in 2022. Just as a definition, the Energy Action Plan is a comprehensive, community-focused document that establishes greenhouse gas reduction goals and outlines strategies, programs, practices that can be used to reduce energy-related greenhouse gas emissions. And energy-related emissions really focus around the use of electricity and natural gas at households and at businesses and industry. So for tonight's portion of this presentation, I just want to provide some background and context for why the Energy Action Plan was developed. And I also wanted to discuss some of the current efforts that the city is taking to reduce our own greenhouse gas emissions from city operations. So California has a long history of taking progressive actions to combat climate change. This effort was largely initiated back in 2006 with Assembly Bill 32, which established statewide programs and goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. About a decade later, a number of students, high school students from Ventura Unified School District, came to city council and spoke and encouraged the city to take steps to reduce community greenhouse gas emissions, including the completion of a Climate Action Plan. In response to the students and other community members, in November 2017, city council directed staff to partner with the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance to complete a community-wide Energy Action Plan. The Regional Energy Alliance and the city were able to fund this effort through a grant from the California Energy Commission. Over the next couple of years, the city worked with the regional Over the next couple of years, the city worked with the Regional Energy Alliance and the Community Environmental Council, which is a nonprofit based out of Santa Barbara, to conduct two community workshops, two community surveys, and other outreach efforts, such as tabling at events, and develop the draft Energy Action Plan. As we've discussed, the findings from this draft will be integrated with the Climate Action Resilience Plan, and will be completed later this year. So although community-wide strategies will continue to be evaluated through the Climate Action Resilience Process, the city is also currently moving forward with a number of efforts to reduce our own municipal energy use. So just have a few of the things we're doing here. The first is to perform energy upgrades at city facilities. We're currently pursuing grant funding through the California Energy Commission to retrofit most of our large facilities, and also our fire stations and some of our parks facilities with LED fixtures. Currently, we have fluorescent tubes, which, although they were efficient when they were put in about 10 years ago, they are old technology, and LED lighting has come a long way and is much more efficient lighting fixture. So that's moving forward, and hoping to move forward on that process this fall and winter. In addition, we're looking to install solar and potentially any energy storage at some of our city facilities. We're currently working with a contractor to identify facilities and to seek a power purchase agreement to have solar facilities installed at some of our city buildings. And a power purchase agreement, essentially, rather than the city buying and paying for the solar system, third-party builds and funds the project, and essentially, the city buys energy from that contractor, and that's the way that the project is paid back. In addition, we're looking to expand community electric vehicle charging infrastructure. City currently has 24 charging point charger, charging ports throughout the city in public lots, and we're looking to expand that. And in addition, attract third-party vendors to install EV charging stations as well. Looking at our own city operations, we're looking to pursue converting a number of our city vehicles over to zero-emission electric vehicles. And right now, we, whenever a vehicle is purchased, typically our sedans or smaller vehicles, we are looking at what type of EV alternatives are out there, and if it's feasible to use those instead of internal combustion engines. Staff is also looking to upgrade city streetlights to LED, although we've already retrofitted the majority of the streetlights that the city owns. The vast majority throughout the city are owned by Southern California Edison. So staff is investigating opportunities to get those converted to LED as well. And as we've done, you know, for the last 10 years, we also want to continue to work with our local environmental nonprofits and non-governmental organizations to partner and really work in the community to improve what the city is doing, but also expand programs into the community. And that's it.
With that, just to summarize, really what staff was looking for tonight was to provide a overview and a progress update of these three important topics, the general plan update, the CARP, and the EAP, and give you an update on where they are in the process and what next steps are coming on each of those items. Again, all of those items will be coming back to council with more detail as more engagement is done on the general plan update through the land use alternatives, and that discussion occurs through summer and fall. It'll come back to city council later in the year or early next year for the results of that public engagement and to determine a preferred alternative. For the CARP and the EAP, it also is moving into the next phase of public engagement, which will happen this summer and beginning of fall, and then develop a draft plan along with the EAP to come back to council for adoption, again, with more detail on the analysis and the outcome of the public outreach. We just wanted to come to council first to let you know all of the public engagement that is about to hit this summer and fall, in case you do hear from your constituents and the community. We will be out there talking about these three topics in the coming months. And then, secondly, for really the action item we're looking for council for tonight is really endorsement of our approach to the land use alternatives. As Matt discussed, our development projections are looking for two-to-three RENA cycles, as well as an equal portion of employment and jobs in comparison to that. As this is a 20-to-30-year document, the general plan update, there will be about three RENA cycles in that period. And so staff's approach is to consider that in the land use alternatives and plan for those projections now, as we go out to the community and discuss this through summer and into fall. So we just want to look for concurrence from the council that you agree with that approach, and using that growth projection and analysis as we develop our land use alternatives and discuss that with the community. With that, we're available for any questions or discussion on any of these topics, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you so much for the presentation. And we have, Councilmember Johnson has questions.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to thank Mr. Yanner for taking the time to answer some of my questions via email, but I do have some more questions for him. Mr. Yanner, how many pages is the Energy Action Plan approximately?
It's a good question. So the actual body of it is, you know, well over 70, 80 pages, and then there's a lot of indexes and background documentation that, you know, puts it up into high 100 pages. I don't remember exactly, I can get that number for you at some point later, but it's a fairly good-sized document.
Thank you, no, I think that's enough of an answer for that. When did staff complete it?
It's been, we've had the draft completed for approximately a year.
Thank you, yes, you said in your email that the draft was finished over a year ago. I remind you that council directed staff to complete an Energy Action Plan. I'm curious when it was completed, and if not, when it will be completed.
Yeah, so the draft has been completed. The final, that would be approved by council. At this point, the plan is to align that timeline along with the CARP and approve those documents together, as the Energy Action Plan will really be a large component of the CARP, at least the content in it, but the document itself will be separate from the CARP.
But it will be completed and published and presented to council?
I'm not sure if it will be presented to council in its final form. Again, the process that we're thinking right now is that the CARP, which is really a lot more comprehensive document, will kind of take the lead, and that the Energy Action Plan will be a supporting document for that, similar to, for example, the Active Transportation Plan, which will also be a supporting document for the CARP.
Thank you, but it will be published?
It will be publicly available, for sure.
Thank you, you know, I note that, you know, it was years ago that council directed staff to complete the Energy Action Plan. In August 2020, at a meeting, staff laid out a timeline, which said that council would see it, quarter one of 2021, you suggest that it was finished in 2021. Where has it, has it, has it, there been any work done on it in the last 15 months?
No, it's the way it was in early 2021.
Then I suppose this would be a question for Mr. Ali Khan. Mr. Ali Khan, I know you're in Mr. McIntyre's seat, but who made the decision not to bring it to council and change the timeline on this? You know, I think stretching out a timeline a couple of years is a pretty drastic change.
Sure, I'm going to allow Ms. Sayer to expand on this, but briefly, there is a lot of synergy between the Energy Action Plan and the CARP, one that feeds into another. We want to make sure that there was consistency between both of those documents. So, Neda, if you have more to add.
Thank you, and I don't mean Ms. Sayer, because I'll point out that, you know, back in 2020, the timeline included the Energy Action Plan as well as CARP. This was always part of the plan. So council's direction, and council was told that there would be an Energy Action Plan in advance of the CARP, and I'm curious, who made the decision to stop work on the Energy Action Plan and not present it to council?
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. In April of 2021, we came to council for action on a resolution to accept a grant to do the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. And that grant had a timeline of being completed by the end of this year. And so as Mr. Yanner stated, it was about a year ago that the draft Energy Action Plan was completed. And a lot of that information is the basis analysis for the CARP. So we did pause on the Energy Action Plan, used a lot of that data and analysis to be the basis of the analysis for the CARP, so that those two documents were in alignment. Now, a lot of the information in the Energy Action Plan does have the municipal side, which Joe covered tonight, but also has a lot of implementation and actions on the business side. And so we wanted to make sure that we did take that draft and those ideas and policies to the community, both the general public and businesses, to discuss those items. And instead of having two separate conversations on very related topics, it made sense to combine those and do public engagement together. So we are talking about both efforts and topics together. And so we did do a survey that covered some of these topics about a year ago, in August and September. We're going to do another survey, as Matt mentioned, as well as workshops. And getting all of that feedback from the public will make, will inform us to make sure that the draft Energy Action Plan and the policies that it's recommending, as well as the CARP that we form, are in alignment with what the community is saying, and they're aware and understand before we come forward to council to adopt a document. There will be specific implementation in there. Electric reach codes may be a topic in there. And so these are all topics that the public will be very interested in, as well as businesses, homeowners, it will affect a lot of the public if these documents are adopted. So that was why we paused, integrated, and are doing outreach together.
Thank you, I appreciate, there's a lot to unpack there. First, you mentioned grants. I will note that we accepted grants to get an Energy Action Plan completed. I believe it was in the six figures. I appreciate what you're saying about doing community outreach and surveys. I will note that we did that for the Energy Action Plan. I don't know whatever happened to that work, but to say we have to restart it because we put a pause on it, I'm seeing a waste of money here and a waste of time. I appreciate all the discussion about how the Energy Action Plan is, as we've seen tonight, talks a lot about municipal uses. It's interesting, because in the August 3, 2020, meeting, I don't remember if it was Mr. Kazner or Mr. Davenport, who was saying that the Energy Action Plan would not really be focusing on municipal uses, but on residential, commercial, industrial, and fugitive greenhouse gas emissions. And I will note that I, I really want to make sure we have some clarification, because even from what we've had in emails today and what we've heard tonight, I've heard two different things about whether or not we're going to have staff complete the Energy Action Plan. Will staff complete the Energy Action Plan?
Yes, the Energy Action Plan will be completed, and it'll be coming forward to council with the Climate Action and Resilience Plan.
And when will that be?
If you'd like to go to the timeline slide. So, just going to give Michael a moment to switch the power, thank you. Based on this timeline slide, the rest of summer, we're going to be doing engagement, and then preparing the CARP in early fall, and releasing that draft CARP. And then in winter, we'll be coming forward to city council with the CARP and the Energy Action Plan. Now, we haven't decided if those will be standalone documents, if the Energy Action Plan will be a portion of the CARP, an attachment to the CARP, or its own standalone document. But both are going to be packaged in some fashion for council.
I'm sorry, you're saying that you don't know that there's a timeline for CARP, but you don't yet know what the plan for the Energy Action Plan is?
We don't know if it will be its own standalone document, if it'll be an attachment to the CARP, if it will be integrated into the CARP. We haven't yet decided how we're going to package that.
Will it come before or at the same time as the CARP?
We will be bringing both together to council in winter.
At the same time?
Yes.
I ask Ms. Sayer, because the plan, and the plan that council signed off on was to have an EAP before the CARP. And I'm curious, is that going to happen?
I'll try to explain again. The EAP and the CARP are going to come before council in winter. Since they cover similar topics, having two separate documents that are covering policies and implementation that are very similar would be confusing for staff and the public to be going back and forth. As an implementation, it's better if they're integrated together. Now, we haven't decided exactly what that would be, if they'd be two separate standalone documents, or integrated in an appendancy, or a section of the CARP.
Thank you, I appreciate that, but then they would come at the same time?
Yes.
Thank you. And so we had staff in August of 2020 saying that this would be presented to council quarter one of 2021. The draft, which has been completed, was finished. Who made the decision to put a pause on this for over a year?
Councilmember Johnson, frankly, we're going to have to get back to you on that. Exactly how this was put on pause to incorporate into a, into part of a larger effort, we'll have to come back to you on exactly how the decision was made, but it made a lot of sense, given that both of these two documents could potentially have conflicting items within them, that we would do the outreach together and make sure that they were, had some cohesion, and did not have any conflict. So I think Ms. Sayer put it well that the approach that staff has taken is one that we think will lead to the best outcome for both of these documents.
Thank you. Mr. Ali Khan, were you aware that for the Energy Action Plan that there were surveys and community outreach workshops that have already been held?
I'm aware that the process started back in 2017, and we had been working on it for quite some time. However, back then, it wasn't contemplated that we, or let me rephrase, we were not in the midst of a general plan update at that time. So given that we went full bore with this effort as we were going or undertaking a general plan, it made sense to integrate the two at that time.
Mr. Ali Khan, you were aware that, we knew that we were going to be doing the general plan update. We were going to be working on the general plan, and we were going to have the CARP and the Energy Action Plan, and there was a timeline for all of this. You are aware of that, yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, those are my questions, Mayor.
Thank you, and now we have Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Is there an issue, a problem with sharing a draft with the city council?
I don't see a problem. It is, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a document, and it can be shared. It's, you know, technically, it's public information. So if council desires a copy, we can provide it.
I'm not going to give you that order, obviously, because I don't have the single authority to do that, but I would probably recommend that you would consider that. Other questions on page, kind of shifting gears here. Arena cycle is about eight years, is that correct? So on page 13, Michael, if you could, zing us to the... So you take the maximum number and use that. I was just wondering, is that a typical practice, that we use maximums not likely or something smaller than the maximum? Because we're looking at, what, 10,600 to 15,900 units? Which if you have three people per unit, is that, like, is that a good number to use?
Yeah, I think what I don't, not sure with the city averages.
We're talking about 33,000 to 46,000 more people in Ventura?
Could I? So, let me, this, the idea of a development projection and what you plan for in terms of the amount of land is a pretty complicated process. So typically, it is, it is common practice for jurisdictions to do actually three times the arena. We believe that actually, this arena cycle that we just went through, the 21 to 29 arena cycle, was a bump up. And we think in the future, it could go down some, which is why we said two to three times the arena cycle. So, you know, it's somewhere in that area. It is also very rare that what is planned, well, that is, that the growth projection is the amount of growth that actually happens. And I'll give you an example of that, which is that the current general plan has 8,300, I believe, as their growth projection. In the 20, approximate 20-year period from when the general plan was started, not exact, but in a 20-year period from 2000 to 2021, the city grew by about 4,100 units. So it actually grew by 50% of what that growth projection was. And that's pretty common, actually. And what we try to do is we think about what that maximum could be, because we don't know where it's going to go, we don't know the pattern it's going to take. And because this is not a statement of policy and it's for environmental review, we want to look at a larger number, so we're covered from an environmental perspective.
Does the state encourage us to use maximums?
Maximum of?
Of the projections, right? Do you use maximums anticipated for new developments?
It is, it is the, it is the maximum, yes. You're supposed to look at, at an envelope of what is the maximum, what could realistically happen. Now, jurisdictions can do less, but what that means is that, for example, if you might need to actually go through the process again of finding new sites for the arena, or you might actually have to update your environmental impact report if you exceed the amount of growth that's anticipated in the environmental impact report. So we tend to actually be a little bit conservative and accommodate more, knowing that not all of that's going to happen.
Yeah, I guess my point is that it's scary to think about 46,000, 47,000 more people in the city of Ventura at the end of three arena cycles? Scary is probably not the right word. Come up with something better. I think it would be extraordinary for, for most of the people in the city to think that we're planning, if that's the right word, and I'm not sure it is, and I want to be respectful, for, to have a city of 150, 160,000?
Councilmember Schrader, I totally understand that perspective. And I understand that that could seem daunting, particularly when we don't typically talk about 30, 20 to 30-year horizons. It is a planning document, so it is just to plan for it and identify where it could happen. The likelihood of that actually being developed at that scale and magnitude is very, very slim. In the last general plan, we had planned for, I believe, 29,000 units, and only about half of that was built in that 20 to, was planned. So even though it's planned and we identify it, the likelihood of it actually being developed at that scale and rate is highly unlikely.
Okay, does it make any sense then to develop? So I can understand you use the maximum, but does it make sense to develop a second set of numbers that isn't maximum, that is something smaller for planning purposes?
Explain again, I'm not following, I apologize.
So right now, we're using maximums anticipated new developments to hit 33,000 to, what, 47,000 people over the next 24 years? And I'll agree that I think the likelihood of that happening is very slim. So I guess what I'm suggesting is, does it make sense to only have that as a planning document when we all just admitted that the likelihood of 46,000 more people isn't really good? But should we have another plan for something less than 46,000 people?
Well, again, this is, what we're doing is we're trying to look at, we don't know where the growth is going to go, right? It could go east, it could go west, it could go central. And so when we do the environmental impact report, we want to try and make sure we're covering all bases there, right? And if we kind of cut it too thin, it actually undermines the environmental impact report. So I actually think we do want to have, cast the net wider, so to speak, knowing that it, we're not going to hit that. That's why we look at that maximum number. And again, this is, this is not a statement of policy. This is not saying, we, the city council, expect the city to grow by 50,000 people in the next 30 years. It's saying that this is what we are going to analyze in the environmental impact report, so we can understand the environmental impacts. And then we can think very broadly about what the infrastructure that we might need for the city to grow in the next 20 years or the next 40 years would be. We have to start thinking now about the infrastructure related to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And now we have Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, so the two to three arena cycles represent how many years? Is that the 30 years in its entirety?
Yeah, I mean, the, it's really, the general plan, if we're going to 2050, covers about three and a half arena cycles.
So that would represent?
Well, the two to three arena cycles is 10,600 to 15,900. So it's under what that, through the time through 2050 is. But again, we don't know what the state is going to do for growth, for the arena in the future.
Okay, and so essentially, by adopting this strategy or this method, it would be similar to the strategy and method used for the last general plan that we approved. So the fact that we use the maximum and only built 50% of the maximum. There's, in other words, it's just a planning strategy as far as approach. So, you know, when we develop a budget, we have conservative projections, and we have the mid-projection, and then a more generous projection. With the budget specifically, we always want to go on the conservative side, just to see, because we have a mandate that says we have to have a balanced budget. But in this case, because we're looking at a, from a high level, it's a high-level document, that's a visioning document, we want to look at everything that's possible, so that we can have a lot of different choices to choose from, from those alternatives. And as you stated, it doesn't mean that we're going to use all those alternatives. It's just saying, hey, look at all the different options we have to choose from. If we limit those options, that limits what we could do as a city, which may be a benefit in the long run to anyone who comes in the city or residents currently in the city who may want to have another option. Does that sound correct?
Yes, pretty much.
Okay, and, and did I hear you say that the state standards kind of request that type of approach?
Well, the state has a, the state says the general plan should be long-term. It doesn't say the number of years. It could be 15 years, it could be 50 years. It's sort of up to the jurisdiction to decide what that is. We, and, and that typically you look beyond, and it's not the state telling us to do multiple arena cycles. This is what is standard practice. Because if we only look at one arena cycle, we might have to redo the process again. And I think that's the thing that we're concerned about, is the efficiency of, you know, we're here having a big community conversation about this. You know, we should have that conversation and think about how the city can evolve over time and make sure that we're accommodating at the outside envelope of what it could, of what could occur. And again, the existing, the current general plan used a term called carrying capacity, which was a land analysis that they did, which said that there's a capacity for, I don't know, 29,000 units, I think is what they said. You never build on all of the parcels that you could possibly build on. And they came up with a growth projection of about 8,000. And then, again, what you see, and that's, that's common, actually. And then what you see is that the actual amount of growth is 50%. Sometimes it's only 25% of that.
And is it the same? I think that pretty much answers all my questions. I appreciate you taking the time to answer the questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And now we have Councilmember Halter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, staff. I really appreciate, and, and Matt, for all your hard work on all these complicated issues. You know, what goes through my mind? I feel like I've spent the majority of my life on the private sector, actually being out there, creating homes, creating landscape, creating jobs, opening businesses. And so a lot of this is government ease to me, I got to be honest. And I got to say that just because we're planning for arena numbers that the state's saying we have to plan for, because we're 3.5 million homes short of what we should have since 2010 in the state, okay? Doesn't mean they're going to be built, because you know why? The city doesn't build them. It's all of us in the private sector who decide that we're going to invest and build the homes that we need. And the problem in the past 20 years, or 30 years, has been that community after community has said no to another new home. And so, all we're doing is trying to think ahead and plan for the homes that we know the state is going to force us to build, because we have to do our part to make sure the state provides for the next generation. And so, I don't really have a problem with that. I, I believe very strongly that by doing so, we can actually grow in a way that enhances what we love about our city. And I believe very strongly. If, if we don't like some of the things that have happened in the last few years, and we say, oh my God, there's so much growth happening, keep in mind, everything that's gone up in the last few years was approved eight to 10 years ago. None of that was approved last year, okay? So just keep that in mind, that, you know, I know, as I said before, when I built my own home in Ventura, it was five and a half years to get a permit. Talked to Anastagie, talked to Jeff Becker, talked to many of the other people out there. How long does it usually take to be entitled to actually say, yes, you can build on your property? And oh, by the way, this is the maximum number of homes that you could build? There was a day, there was 20 years of time, that we had a beauty contest, that the city of Ventura allowed no more than 200 or 300 homes to be built in any given two-year cycle. And you would see all these people that own property coming forward, sharing their beauty contest on what they're going to give back to the city if they're allowed to build their 143 homes, okay? It was quite, quite a spectacle, what transpired. And it was disheartening to see that democracy had jumped to that level. So I want to say I absolutely support what staff's doing. I absolutely support the efforts at the G-PAC. We have 22 outstanding members of G-PAC that is looking at all the different options in the variables, and a lot of very committed community members as well, that have been attending on a regular basis, to provide voices that may not be heard, or that people are thinking are not being heard. I'm a little bit distraught by my colleague. I'm not quite sure where Councilmember Johnson was going with the Energy Action Plan and Climate Action Resiliency Plan. As a matter of fact, I have some studying that I need to do, obviously, on some of these. But I do know that the general plan requires the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. And I trust in a city that we've been 70 to 90 open positions short for the last two years, that I'm not going to second-guess at the midnight hour why one thing wasn't presented a year ago, as opposed to being presented together at the time period that we're required to do so by the state of California. And it sounds like you're on a productive path to do so. I will go on to say that there's things that frustrate me, just as somewhat of a layperson who simply does the things that I mentioned earlier. And is this the fact that if we really believe in things like a climate action plan, okay? And about getting off of things like fossil fuels and the things that are causing the climate change that we're experiencing today? I think that, you know, I don't necessarily know if it begins locally, like I believe almost everything else does. But I really do think that there would be a greater plan out there that says exactly when we need to shut down what type of gas plant or what type of oil-fired plant. The last thing I want to see is what I see happening now. And what I'm seeing happening now is I'm seeing homes that were being, our electricity's being turned off because of fire. And you know what? You know how many diesel-powered generators we've installed on that hillside since the fire? I don't think that has any, any, any positive impact on any climate action plan or resiliency. I want to know about water redundancy. I want to know about where we're going to get water. I don't want, other than just, okay, my time's up? Okay, well, I knew that my colleague asked several questions in a very stern way. I'm still yet trying to figure out where he was going with it. And I apologize to staff that that was taken in any harsh way, because I do believe you're on the right path, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Halter. I have a couple of questions. Are ADUs being considered into that number of units, or is that something separate?
No, it's part of that.
It's part of that?
Yeah.
So that number includes ADUs and any other kind of unit for housing?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And a question about the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. Is that, does that include the SoCal Gas, Gas Compressor Station and the amount of emissions and methane and all of that? I see on slide 22 that it says that this will act as the city's greenhouse gas reduction program. And so it'll take an inventory of current emissions, and estimate future emissions, and establishes greenhouse gas reduction measures? I think it was slide 22, the one that I was referencing? Yeah, right there. So is, is there going to be, like, a study done of how much that site produces to be able to include, no, or how does that work?
Not specifically, no. It's much, at a much broader level, at a much higher level of, you know, if we increase, you know, for example, if you change the, an energy code, for example, and you look at, at the energy savings from that, times the number of units that are built, how many greenhouse gas emissions reductions are there? So it doesn't look specifically at, you know, if you, if you add this solar panel here, what is the benefit of that? It looks really at a much higher level.
Oh, okay, so it won't be like a very specific inventory of what's going on in the city right now? And?
It is, it's, it's at a multiplier effect, not at a specific facility level.
All right. And then on the next slide, slide number 23, the community-wide greenhouse gas emissions. It mentions that we will be looking at the comparison of 2019 compared to the 2010 baseline. So we have information of 2010, and then we will compare the 2019, and we will see the difference between?
Correct.
Okay, and that was the same way that the 2010 baseline was calculated for greenhouse gas emissions, just very general?
Generally, yes. We try to be consistent about, about how we do that. I'm not sure it's exactly the same, but we, what we want to do, again, is we want to look at, at trends and the direction that the city's been going, and then project that into the future if we continue on that trend, and then if we change the trend line. That's the exercise.
And just going back to SoCal, SoCal Gas's compressor station, since it was determined by NASA that it was a methane superemitter, does that affect our calculations or the way we assess this?
Not exactly, because what we're really looking at is overall energy use in the city and by, by different sectors. And that's how we calculate it. Again, it's not at the facility level, it's at the broad, community-wide level.
Okay, all right. Those were my questions, and I believe Councilmember Johnson has an additional question?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Mayor. I have a question. You know, actually, first, you know, just a point of clarification for my colleagues. Please understand that I'm asking questions during our questioning period, and I'll save comments for our comment period. Mr. Higlund, is, is a draft of something that staff is putting together, is that a public record?
Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, it could depend. Oftentimes, it's not, because it's still in draft form. It's not technically, a draft document is not technically subject to the to the Public Records Act. I'm not familiar in this particular document, and how it's been used, or created, or distributed. But generally, it's not.
Councilmember Johnson, you are muted.
Thank you. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Higlund, but if staff is to send a document to all of council, that makes it a public record. Is that correct? Unless it's, you know, a legal memo.
That would typically be the case.
That would typically be the case. Thank you. Then I have this question for staff. If it's so easy to share a copy of the draft, even though it's not a public record, why was I not able to get a copy when I started asking about this in February?
Councilmember Johnson, I'm unaware of the request, that specific request, but if you'll allow me just to confer with staff this week to determine if we can go ahead and publish that draft or make it available publicly, we certainly will. It wasn't so much that we were intentionally not willing to share it. It's more about making sure that it has a nice handshake with the CARP, so that those two documents, again, agree and are shown as a cohesive document.
And Councilmember Johnson, my apologies. I did have to mute you in between, because we're getting feedback.
Sorry. Thank you. And so, Mr. Alakan, you were unaware that I started asking what was going on with the EAT months ago, and I was told that we only had a draft, and that we were soon going to have a timeline for when it was going to be completed?
I just don't recall that conversation at the current moment. But if indeed that was a quest, again, let me confer with staff this week and see what we can do to make that available.
Thank you, Mayor. Those are my questions.
Thank you. And now we have Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've created visioning documents for nonprofits through board retreats in the past. And at the end of the day, after all the work is done, they've thrown the spaghetti up against the wall, you've taken all the information, you've summarized it, created bullet points, identified the top issues, top 10 issues, and then narrow it down to three. You give that, hand that document over to the nonprofit, and you say, this is, this is the best of everything that you could possibly do. It's wonderful. Your vision, your goals and objectives are great. And if you do these things, you'll be able to reach these goals and do all of this that we've laid out in the plan. And that's just exactly what it is. It's a visioning document that gives them, sets them on a path to say, this is the best and the biggest of what you can possibly do with what you're given and your resources. At the end of the day, it's the board who says, yes, we're going to go ahead and do this, that, or that. And many times, I'm always underwhelmed, because most of the nonprofit organizations choose to only do one of the things on the whole entire plan. A lot of times, it took like three days, or eight hours, and an entire Saturday, or something like that, or over a couple months to get to that point. And at the end of the day, they just do what they would like to do. And I see this process the same way. We're identifying all the most wonderful things that we can do at a high level, and we're looking at all that's possible, all the alternatives, all the options, all the greatest of what can possibly be done, to provide a lot of opportunity. But at the end of the day, most likely, as has been stated, we're not going to probably do most of it. And so, I'm wondering, as a consultant, has this been your experience, not just in the city of Ventura, and not, you know, just based upon our last general plan, but has, is that the general practice, or the general rule of what actually occurs?
Yeah, the process you described is very similar. You have a process. You do a vision. You throw lots of ideas out there. You boil them down. And not everything that is actually in the plan ultimately gets implemented. And that's what happened in the last, the last cycle as well.
Thank you. And my last question. Does future planning allow us to have more local control of how and where, and in what way, things are built in the city of Ventura?
Can you ask that question again? I'm sorry.
Does future planning, like what we're doing, the visioning, allow us the opportunity to have more local control over how, when, and where, and in what way, things are built in the city of Ventura?
That's the goal of what we're trying to do, is to make sure that we're trying to get a step ahead of what the state is asking for with the RENA projections and anticipating the amount of growth. So that we're doing that now, looking at the big picture, rather than looking piecemeal in five-year increments or 10-year increments. And so, that's what we're trying to do with the general plan, is to really look big and long-term, and see what it, what you can do, rather than looking at it piecemeal.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to bring that up, because I know a lot of the state laws are attempting to take away a lot of the local control. And, you know, although there are some things that do need to be reconciled as far as affordable housing and that sort of thing, at the same time, what we don't want is housing that doesn't, is not a good fit for the city of Ventura. And a lot of what I've been pushing on the General Plan Committee, a lot of what I've heard from residents and the advisory board members, is that they, they're not against it. What they're saying is, is that they want it to be done the right way, in a way that fits the city of Ventura to improve the quality of life, and that is a compliment in the neighborhoods that those, that those projects may be built in. And so, I think that's more where this is all sitting. We're not necessarily asking the city to build that much housing. We're actually saying, you know, can we look at all of our opportunities so that we have the best opportunity to create the best type of housing in the city of Ventura? Is that a correct?
Yeah, it's a good summary. It's correct.
Summary. Thank you. That concludes my questions for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Any additional questions before we take public comments? All right, I think we're ready for public communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have 12 speakers this evening. Our first speaker is going to be Carol Spector, followed by Liz Campos.
Hi, City Council and staff. First of all, listening to Mr. Remy speak has changed a little bit about what I'm going to say, but let me start there. So many people are concerned with the G-PAC process. There's a lot of frustration and rampant rumors, whether they're true or not. Six-story buildings being proposed for downtown, midtown, and even on the coast, and people putting stickers places, and, you know, saying that that's what they want to see. And it's interesting, because that happened at the May 16 meeting, which was not recorded, not televised, and not on the G-PAC website. So, there's really no way to confirm what is going on. The 17th is on there, but not the 16th, for some reason. And a staff member, when we asked it, there's no such recording. So, I think there's a disconnect between what we're hearing and what we're seeing. And I really appreciate that we're going to have a lot more public input, according to what you're saying. But all the meetings should be televised. I'm not sure why they're not televised live. It's in the same meeting that the DRC is televised live. People resent being put in the hallway and not being included in the room. And citizens are not allowed to speak till the last part of the meeting, when G-PAC members are tired and restless, and citizens feel like they're being handled. Like, okay, you can talk for two minutes, but that's it. So, these are the things that I'm hearing. I couldn't attend the last one. I had COVID. But there's just a disconnect between what I'm hearing about the public being involved, and what I'm hearing from the public. So, I'm hoping you, City Council members, and especially Mr. Halter and Ms. Brown, because it's, you're on the committee, that you can find a way to make the public feel more welcome and engaged. And, you know, it's our city. I love what you just said, Ms. Brown, about making things fit into the community, because that's really what we're mostly concerned with, is all the things that are going on and being placed and being built, and not necessarily fitting in. Low-income housing would be amazing. I live downtown. All I see are high-priced things. And anyhow, back to the process. Hopefully, you will find a way to make us feel more engaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spector.
Liz Campos, followed by Wendell.
Good evening. Last Saturday, we had our regular Avenue Neighborhood cleanup. And I was inspired to come here tonight by a new organization on Ventura Avenue that calls themselves Earth Keepers. It's a group of about 20 young people who range in age from approximately 3 to 12. And at a community lunch that we had expressed their concern to me about having a future. For that reason, I'm here tonight to discuss the Energy Action Plan, which I too have been watching since 2019. In referring to the Energy Action portion of this general plan, I want to ask you to take a serious look at pulling out and creating a strong ordinance in support of the recent request from the Ventura Climate Coalition for an electrification ordinance. It also supports the recent call from the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change to cut all methane use by at least 33 percent no later than the year 2025. 2025 seems very close, but we're at that point because for 50 years, we haven't done enough. Maybe we haven't do anything. But if every city, county, and state takes swift action to do small things like legislating, building electrification, we can start the process of reversing the ravages of climate change and give a future to young people like the Earth Keepers. And take note, when I say building electrification, I'm not talking about a reach code. I'm talking about a strong ordinance that moves us away from gas hookups for cooking, for heat, and electricity, or, and moving to electricity. Building electrification will come before the County Planning Commission in late July, along with a review of oil and gas methane leaks. I personally think it's time the city of Ventura step up responsibly and decide to protect the health of all Ventura residents. On the relationship of methane-laden air and human health, I sent you all an email this weekend. And I ask that you not wait for the general plan or the Energy Action Plan, but take action now to electrify Ventura. Save us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campos.
Wendell Lajdahl, followed by Amy Sherry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, State Councilmembers. There are a lot of things, excuse me, there's a lot that I've heard tonight to be concerned about, but that's not why I came. I was at the last G-PAC meeting, and I have concerns about the way that it's being run by Remy and Associates. Members of G-PAC and the public were told that at the conclusion of the two-day meeting, there would be an interactive discussion about the recommendations, and the public would have an opportunity to share their thoughts. Members of the public were told during the brainstorming session that G-PAC, they could observe G-PAC members only. No communication with G-PAC members was allowed. In the end, Mr. Remy rushed to rush the G-PAC members through their discussion and cut the public comments to one minute. Several members of the public were unable to speak to G-PAC members throughout the entire two-day meeting, were cut off in the middle of their comments by Mr. Remy, who insisted that the meeting must move on. Why? Because Matt Remy had someplace else to be. Really? Is Mr. Remy not committed enough to this project to block out enough time to carry out the meeting that was supposed to be managed by him and his group? And is public comment on Ventura's general plan such a low priority? And the other question I have is, why did 30 percent of the G-PAC members not attend this two-day meeting? Was it because of poor planning, poor communication, lack of commitment? Months ago, I inquired about being an alternative to the G-PAC process. I was told, we have adequate coverage. We have plenty of backup. These issues lead to the question, where are Remy and Associates' priorities? Have they already decided on a cookie-cutter design that they will put, pull from the shelf and stick on to Ventura, Ventura's general plan? If a complete examination of all the input from all of the people involved in this process is not of primary importance, if public input is not true-
Mr. Wendell, you can address your comments to the council members.
Okay. If public comment is not, is not adequately addressed, and adequately served, and adequately inquired for, reached, for the public to be able to put their input into the process, it's really unfortunate. And I would encourage the council to consider-
Thank you, Mr. Wendell.
Amy Sherry, followed by Karen Flock.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. Got a lot to think about tonight. My name's Amy, by the way. Regarding the last two meetings that everyone's talking about, I agree, it wasn't really, there wasn't communication back and forth. We weren't allowed to ask questions. And the heat map that he produced, where the activity was all about, like, that's where the community wants to increase density. Those were pre-selected areas that were outlined on the maps for us. Most of the East End is all open and green, because there was no areas to fill in for us. I don't know who chose those areas, but development should be distributed throughout the city, and not just concentrated in a couple little areas. You know, it was basically like choosing A, B, or C. There was no community input. But the environmental portion, greenhouse gases, carbon footprint, that's fine. But we also got to talk about water. Where is it going to come from? When's that going to start? Climate change is definitely making less water available to us. We're not even hooked up to state, not that state has water. Anyhow, before I run out of time, there is a petition going around town. We just started it about three weeks ago, where we already have over 300 signatures. We're getting them all wet. I made a copy and left it with the clerk when we walked in, so if you get a chance to read it, that would be great. We're just going to keep getting signatures until, I guess, the plan comes back to you this winter. And if they haven't listened to anybody, and like, kind of spread out the development, I don't know. They're just not going to be listening, I guess. And now I'm running out of time. That's it. Oh, one more thing. For getting people involved, there should be banners or posters around town, so people know about it. Not everybody's online. A lot of people I talk to don't even know that the general plan is happening right now. If it was going to affect the city for 25 years to come, you'd think you'd want to have, you know, like, a celebration. Hey, come on, get involved. This is what we're doing. But, you know, you really got to look hard. Got to know exactly where to go to find any information about it. So, that's pretty much it for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sherry.
And there's three meetings coming up, not two. 19, 20, and 21.
Karen Flock, followed by Kyler Carlson.
Good evening. My name is Karen Flock. I'm the, I'm with the Housing Authority of the city of San Bueno Ventura. I'm the Deputy Director for Real Estate Development. We appreciate the direction of the general plan and the housing element to address our housing needs. This approach provides options. And I've been at several of the recent G-PAC meetings, and I thought, I think, that the way the public's been involved is positive, and I thought it worked well. The approach that the general plan is moving on is consistent with the results of the community survey that was presented tonight, where residents would like to see progress made in addressing homelessness and affordable housing. I believe that we can do this, and also address concerns about growth. I want to thank you for, in a previous meeting, when you allocated funding for the Ventura County Farm Worker Housing- County Farm Worker Housing Study, that's identified as one of the programs in the housing element. And I also want to mention that the Housing Authority, we're committed to addressing energy and climate issues. Our recent projects are mostly all electric, and we are producing most of the energy that is used at the projects through solar, through solar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Flock.
Kyler Carlson, followed by Stephen Schaefer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kyler. I'm a city resident. And stop me if you've heard this before, but my biggest concerns are the rise in our unsheltered population and the increasing, or the lack of affordable housing in the city. Certainly, the land use alternatives that the general plan is going to propose aren't going to unilaterally save, solve these complex issues, but the lack of supply plays a huge, lack of supply of affordable housing plays a huge part in those issues. And the land use alternatives can do a huge part in increasing the supply of affordable housing in our city. Because of that, I'd like to encourage you to endorse the approach suggested tonight by staff to go forward with two to three rena cycles of units. All be between 45 and 55 the next time we, as a city, think about a general plan. And so now is the time to act. I don't want to wait around and be priced out of the city. I'd like to raise a family here. So please, council. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Stephen Schaefer, followed by Alexis Rizzo.
Good evening. I just have a slide from the previous meeting. So good evening. My name is Stephen Schaefer, and locals and visitors alike love our historic city. Yet, the vision statement does not include historic preservation. It does state, we will evolve, but will we recognize our city in 20 years if we evolve and we don't preserve the most historic parts of our city? So the goals and actions of the general plan should not damage cultural resources from Native American sites to the downtown. And my general plan comment tonight is about one word. It might even be a typo. In the proposed land use alternatives for the downtown, it currently reads, encourage historic preservation and reuse of quality buildings. The term "quality" is subjective, and the term "quality historic building" has no codified definition, is ambiguous. The official term is "qualified," not "quality." A qualified historic building is an official definition. It's codified in the California State Building Code by FEMA and other federal and state agencies, and it is objective. Google the definition "qualified historic building," and the first hit is the official state definition. So the general plan should be clear and predictable, subjective terms like "quality" should be avoided. The sentence, "encourage historic preservation and reuse of qualified historic buildings," would be perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Okay, our next speaker is Alexis Rizzo, and Alexis will bring you over as a panelist, and you'll be able to unmute yourself. Okay, Alexis, you should be able to unmute yourself. Alexis, Alexis Rizzo. Okay, Alexis, we're going to put you on hold, and we'll go to Kathleen Wheeler. Kathleen Wheeler will be followed by Kristen Kessler. Alexis, we'll come back to you. Kathleen? We're going to move you over right now as a panelist. Okay, Kathleen, you should be able to unmute yourself.
My name is Kathleen. I'm a resident of the city and a member of the Ventura Climate Coalition. The staff report attached to tonight's agenda referred to interrelated city initiatives, and those initiatives will hopefully address the equally interrelated challenges that there are to our future. In your June 13 meeting, five community organizations were represented, 20 individuals laid out the case for including building electrification in those activities. And I'd like to offer a brief reminder of why prohibiting natural gas infrastructure in new construction is an opportunity to be seized now. First, it demonstrates urgency. Waiting means that new buildings will have gas hookups for the life of the building, adding more and more greenhouse gas emissions. Whereas if we build them right from the start, we'll stop adding fuel to the fire, so to speak, and we'll avoid the cost of stranded assets later. The evidence is overwhelming that we're not moving at the speed required by climate science when it comes to reducing emissions. To avoid the worst effects of climate change, building emissions alone will need to be reduced by 90% or more. There's, secondly, there's nothing precluding starting now and finishing this year. It can and it should fold right into the plans that are in the works that have been described tonight, as seen, for example, with Remy's strategies list. It's there. Isn't delaying this action a little bit like wanting to lose weight and saying to yourself, I'm going to start a diet on Monday, and I'm going to eat as much as I want right now? Third, it demonstrates concern for the equally important and interrelated values of public health and equity and affordability. Evidence is irrefutable that there's more danger from gas appliances than previously thought. Concentrations of toxins resulting from gas cooking are the highest for apartments, and low-income communities live in multi-unit buildings and don't have a choice in the property owner's decisions. They can't escape the harmful effects of natural gas in their homes. And electrification does lower energy bills and construction costs. So prohibiting gas hookups now is consistent with the direction that state laws and policies are headed anyway, just with greater intention. Include exemptions if you think it's necessary, for example, restaurants. But please take decisive action to show that we in Ventura can contribute to the gathering momentum to transition away from gas as fast as possible.
Okay, our next speaker, Alexis Rizzo. Alexis Rizzo?
Hello, can you all?
We're having a hard time hearing you, Alexis. Is there a way of getting closer to the microphone?
Can you hear me now?
That's a little better.
Okay, I'm just going to try to speak as loudly as possible-
We can hear you now.
Sorry for having some audio. Oh, hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, perfect. Hello, council members and staff. My name is Alexis, Policy Associate at Community Environmental Council, or CEC. CEC works throughout Ventura, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo Counties on climate action as an environmental nonprofit. We have been fortunate to work with the City of Ventura in developing the Energy Action Plan and for it to serve as a comprehensive community document. Today, I would like to speak to two early action items that the City of Ventura should consider while updating the general plan and developing the Climate Action Plan, which are a building electrification ordinance for new construction and an electric vehicle action plan. Buildings account for about 24, 25% of greenhouse gas emissions in California, and much of that comes from burning natural gas in homes. And a building electrification ordinance is a vital step in reducing the city's reliance on fossil fuels, and would also be compatible with the state's goal of carbon neutrality. And the decision to do so holds four benefits, which I won't go too deeply into, since it was highlighted in the Ventura Climate Coalition's educational presentation to the council on June 13. But the four benefits that I do want to re-highlight are the health benefits, the equity benefits, the affordability, and the ability to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by doing such an ordinance. The city should also consider an electric vehicle action plan as an early action item. Transportation is the largest share of greenhouse gas emissions in the county, and the city should develop an EV action plan and develop policies to make 50 to 100% of new vehicle purchases be electric by 2025, as well as hire staff members to focus on EV work. EVs are becoming more affordable, and new EV purchases in recent months have been on the rise. But each time a resident doesn't have access to charging, they may purchase a gas car, and we, as a community, are locked into another 50 to 100 tons of carbon for a decade or two. At this point, EV adoption with over 1 million EVs sold in California and gas vehicles phased out by 2035, it's really critical, critically important, that the city develops its own sized EV action plan with specific policies and goals. The County of San Diego has actually developed an excellent EV plan, and it's easy to emulate those policies and goals for their fleet charging stations and workplace chargers as well. And I would be happy to provide counsel and city staff with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo.
Okay, our next speaker is Kristen Kessler, followed by Wayne Morgan. Kristen, you should be able to unmute yourself. Kristen Kessler? Kristen, you-
Yes, hello. Good evening. My name is Kristen Kessler. I'm a member of the Ventura Climate Coalition. Council, please pursue an electrification ordinance for new buildings. This is important to me because I'm concerned about indoor air quality and about climate change. As a renter, my only option is to cook with gas. It makes me uneasy knowing that I am polluting the air in my home when I use my stove. Cooking with gas also heats up my home during hot weather, which in turn causes me to use the AC more often, resulting in higher energy bills. I want to use my AC as infrequently as possible. Having an electric stove would keep my home cooler in the summer and would give me the peace of mind that the air in my home is clean. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kessler.
Wayne Morgan, followed by George Amendola. Okay, Wayne, you should be able to speak. Wayne Morgan, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak. If not, we'll go to George Amendola, and we'll come back to Wayne. George Amendola, we'll bring you over now, George. And George, you should be able to unmute yourself. George, go ahead.
Trying. Please stand by.
Perfect, we can hear you.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, everyone. George Amendola, resident of Ventura District 1. Earlier, Councilmember Friedman spoke of the conundrum with Ventura, that being open space, preservation, and affordable housing. Former council member, we are stated during some of her final remarks that the city and the county membership in SCAG and RENA is causing much of our city's housing and transportation issues. She said the solution is the city needs to find a way to disconnect from SCAG and those RENA requirements with SCAG, and align with the MPO of Santa Barbara County and San Luis Obispo Counties. That will lessen the demand on Ventura to overbuild and meet these RENA requirements. On the comment of homelessness, I believe the root cause of homeless issue in Ventura is the demands by the NGOs enabling and perpetuating the issue, drawing increased homelessness to the city. It's very cyclical here, especially in the summertime, almost like the word comes out, come to Ventura, we'll feed you, we'll provide services to you, provide methadone to you. That needs to change. That will help certainly lessen the impact of the homeless crisis that we're having by people who are not from here. Staff is consistently running the city by managing by crisis, with last-minute reporting and meeting deadlines, with 11th-hour recommendations prior to important deadlines. I'm really frustrated with this local government by placing a ribbon and a bow on this issue of trust of local government by the earlier sample survey. The public is not truly connected, as they have been alienated by the city with the lack of local news coverage and defaulting outreach proxy by the city's website and dependency of that communication to the public. Staff does whatever they want, and it appears staff controls council sometimes, and is clear a council does not task or hold or demand staff accountable to performance. The exception tonight is Councilmember Johnson during his questioning period. Then we heard from Councilmember Halter that he needs to come up to speed and do more research. Frankly, instead of supporting Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Halter undermined Councilmember Johnson with rambling comments during the questioning period. Sir, why are you not prepared for this discussion this evening? Did you not receive the agenda and staff report timely? I, for one, do not wish my elected representatives to roll over for an easy yes vote with every staff recommendation. Councilmember Schroeder or any council member could give orders to staff by making motions and with consensus gained from your peers with the call for vote. You do not need to have staff present a motion for your consideration. You are capable of making that motion. Sometimes I wonder why some of you ran for council at all-
Thank you, Ms. Amendola.
And I'm back. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Wayne Morgan. We'll go back to Wayne, and Wayne is going to be followed by Mark Velazquez. Wayne, you should be able to speak. Okay, we're going to go to Mark Velazquez, followed by Trevor Gottman.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Hi, my name is Mark. I'm a resident of District 3. Sorry for tuning in so late, but I just got home from work, but I have been listening during my shift. I wanted to say, for rena cycles, we should be aiming high, whether it's in terms of housing production, job attraction, or quality of life. As someone who walks around downtown almost daily, I'm happy to see new housing going in on info sites. Hopefully, this helps us lower our dependency on private cars and hopefully move towards a more transit-oriented city. One issue I'd like to bring up is youth engagement. As, you know, I'm 23 years old, and I didn't really see that many young people at the May G-PAC meetings. Perhaps you need outreach to areas with, like, high youth traffic, maybe like VC, local high schools when they're back in session, the mall, or setting up like a bi-weekly booth in downtown to advertise to people about these meetings. You know, how these meetings will affect their immediate lives, but in the years to come, when the general plan reaches, like, you know, its maturity in 2030 or 2040, and even beyond that. In addition, for the G-PAC meetings, it would be nice to have the option to participate remotely, like I'm doing now, even if it's just public comment. During my time at a uni, I didn't really have the option to participate, only read the meeting reports, share what I learned with my classmates and stuff like that. Also, very supportive of a ban on natural gas for new developments, and possibly even a ban on new gas stations, like cities such as Petaluma and the Bay Area have been pursuing. Thank you so much. You guys are doing amazing work, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Velazquez.
Okay, our next speaker is Trevor Gottman, and then we'll go back to Wayne Morgan one Okay. Just give us one second here. Okay, Trevor, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening again, everybody. Thank you. I was compelled to talk because of the community speaking up. There's some really wonderful members of our community that are willing to come and keep us on track and check on things, and we need to encourage this. And as Mark just said, I just feel that we've got our parks in rent, and we've got our school districts, and we should really be holding these meetings in the distributed, in each of our local community schools or the local community parks. And we can, you know, we can have the city host a hotspot out there that we can all come and attend and sit around. That would encourage a little more of community participation. But I just wanted to bring up, from the start, you know, prevention is better than cure. But I just wanted to bring up from the start, you know, prevention is better than cure. And, you know, we've always been a curator. The Western sort of societies have tended to sort of like, oh, and the curator process just go headfirst into everything and then sort of fix things after the fact. And we're in the change. We've got to prevent things, and prevention comes from knowing what's about and knowing each other and figuring out from there how to stop and stopping things and knowing, you know, that takes participation of all of us. So I just want to encourage that, you know, the G-PAC, because Wendell Lillie Dolph, he had, I was there at the first of the two meetings, I couldn't make the second one. And even at the first one, I was also disillusioned, was that I'd been to all the others and because they were hybrid, these were the only ones that weren't hybrid. And because the format had changed and the participation, we're not used to, you know, so I go into kindergarten the first day and everybody's somewhere hiding behind the curtains and no one entered the door and, you know, and we're all just getting used to each other. And so that's why I think we need this participation and we need to sort of like work it really from the ground up. And seriously, when I said that, that opening talk, I, you know, it was Mr. McIntyre, I cannot remember his name right now, but what a wonderful presentation and these are wonderful results to look at and to really delve into. And as I said, start from that, what seems the most, the least important is, you know, sort of, as I said, follow the rules, so to speak. And but as I said, we make the rules. The rules need to be simple and we need to listen to the natural way that can look at things and see how things work. And as I said, we're, you know, we're all in it and all of us have both sides and we're all got to find that moderation point that somehow we can sort of live between and understand and respect and know those, you know, to each be able to address our potential and capacity. So I just say, just.
Thank you, Mr. Gottman.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Okay, we'll go back to Wayne Morgan for one last opportunity. Wayne Morgan?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Oh, good, okay. Good late evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, and members of the staff. In reading the general plan update, I too was surprised that the EAP was initiated in twenty seventeen, yet it hadn't been released, hasn't been released or completed to this date. My concern is that time is running out for us to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to avoid catastrophic climate events. The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change declared Code Red for Humanity. California's goal of forty percent reduction in greenhouse gases by twenty thirty is slipping away every day we dither and don't take action. Climate change isn't top of mind for most because it isn't affecting us that much right now, but it is a slow-moving ship with lots of inertia. If we let this ship continue on its path that it's on, it will be too late. Please act to reduce greenhouse gases with the urgency that the climate crisis demands. It will take all levels, it will take all levels of government to do this. Also mentioned in the staff report at the bottom of Page Four was the statement, since the community engagement, the city and Raimi and Associates conducted more detailed analysis of anticipated greenhouse gas reductions by twenty thirty. This begs the question, what did this analysis say about how the city is doing toward meeting the goal of reducing greenhouse gases? With regards to other sections of the Energy Action Plan, some of the actions cited seem rather like baby steps. LED lighting, fixture replacement, solar installations, they're good investments and they're no brainers in my book. The sooner they are implemented, the more savings the city will realize. One other comment on EV chargers, I believe that you mentioned twenty-four charger ports. If these are Level Two chargers, this is not adequate. People who don't have home, don't have home chargers will need DC fast chargers to meet their daily needs. People aren't going to park their car for four hours at a Level Two charger after work. So this is especially important for renters who don't have access to home chargers. So please prioritize fast-level chargers. And thank you, councilmembers, for the time you sacrifice and dedicate to the benefit of our community. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Okay, Madam Mayor, that does conclude our public comment on Item thirteen A. In addition to our speakers this evening, we did receive several emails. Those have been posted in a supplemental packet, and I did also just want to confirm that I did receive that petition here, and I will as well be distributing that in a supplemental packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. And so with that, we will now hand over the, or turn the conversation over to council for comments, and we have Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think Mr. Morgan was absolutely right and Ms. Wheeler and Ms. Rizzo about squandering time. I've been on council for eighteen months now, and you know, I do these things after just about every council meeting where I meet with people. And you know, one of the questions that keeps coming up is, what are we doing about greenhouse gas emissions? And when I say, well, we're not really, the question is, why not? And I don't have a good answer. This is part of why I started looking into figuring out where we were on the Energy Action Plan months ago. And I expect, yeah, my questioning was stern. I expect everybody knows exactly where I am going with this. This is outrageous. You know, staff deciding to put off something council directed them to do, putting it off for years without telling council. Yes, I will second-guess staff, especially when they're not doing what council directed them to do. The problem here is staff second-guessing council. We are here to hold staff accountable. We're not here to give guidance. Guidance is great. Guidance doesn't mean anything if we're not holding staff accountable. And I'll note that this isn't the first time that this has happened with directions from I'm glad that we're probably going to see the EAP. I will note that nowhere in the staff report or in the PowerPoint was their discussion about it being released. As you probably know, I started asking questions about this via email today. I'm glad we're going to get it. But you know, a question I asked in email and the question I asked tonight was, who made the decision to put off council's directions for two years? I didn't get a question in email, I didn't get an answer. I didn't get an answer to that in email, I didn't get an answer to that tonight. Nobody's stepping up and taking responsibility for it. And I appreciate that this is awkward. I really do. This is the only forum I have to share this with my colleagues. This is it. You know, Peter Gilli, and I'm glad to hear it's a public record, Peter Gilli has the luxury of sending an email to all of us explaining why we shouldn't pursue electrification right now. He can do that quietly outside of a public meeting. I'm limited to doing this in a public meeting. The public needs to know, the council needs to know. And if council's okay with staff taking directions as suggestions, then I think the public needs to hear that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. And now we have Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to start out by saying that every year, council protocols set guidelines on city priorities. And I will say, in the last year or so, we've, we've put a lot of things on hold. The pandemic created delays, the General Plan Committee had to start up. One of our colleagues' positions had to be reappointed. The cannabis came before us, the cannabis tax structure, the housing element became, you know, a major priority. In general, the city council itself is the one, in the beginning of the year, when we set our planning strategies and priorities for the year, helped redirect kind of some of that stuff. And I, as a councilmember, will take some responsibility for that. But at the same time, it's always been that climate has been a priority. It always has been. Climate action. Sophia and I met with a group of climate action groups way back in twenty nineteen, but that was before the pandemic hit. I want to also say that, Mr. Yanner, I was completely aware of all of your work and what you had been doing way back then, and I knew you were working hard on it. And we appreciate all the work that you've put into this. And I also appreciate the fact that a lot of the statistics and the data that you've collected, that the G-PAC consultants are using in order to, you know, move their part of the plan forward. You did extensive work. It was timely production of EAP, and it was a year ago, and you've been, everyone's been patiently waiting to present this climate or EAP. And during this pause, I can appreciate the fact that, I'm sure, many constituents may not have been as understanding, you may have received multiple phone calls, you may have received angry notes. And we understand that a lot of times, with all that we're doing, with the G-PAC, with community development, with a lot of our departments, we're receiving a lot, even as councilmembers, we're receiving a lot of pushback. I just want to say, I just want to ask or restate that I think that, that is not the EAP and the Climate Action Plan being developed by the General Plan Committee, are those two separate goals and purposes set out by each plan? So in other words, the EAP focuses on what's happening with the city and our facilities, and the Climate Action Plan is focusing on more general impacts throughout the community. Is that a true statement?
The Energy Action Plan does address both community energy usage and greenhouse gas emissions, as well as our own municipal emissions. So it does cover both. The Climate Action Resilience Plan, in addition to looking at energy, it looks at transportation and emissions, greenhouse gas emissions from transportation, and also looks at other elements such as solid waste and the emissions from solid waste. So the CARP is a broader, a broader analysis of greenhouse, a broader and more complete analysis of greenhouse gas emissions and reduction measures.
So you would say that they would complement one another?
For sure, yeah.
So they're not in competition with one another? It's not a duplication of effort? It's a separate, in other words, they're both on separate?
They're separate. The CARP really includes a lot of the elements of the EAP. The EAP is like a part of the CARP, so let's say it's about sixty percent of the CARP. And then there's another forty percent that is not addressed by the EAP that looks at transportation and other, other activities that create greenhouse gas emissions.
So the CARP, in some ways, closes the gaps that may exist?
Right.
Okay, so that's good to hear. I'll halt for a second because it seems like, Peter, did you have a response or some additional comments?
I only want to offer that if the council would like the complete statement regarding an email that I sent, I would be happy to give it in response to what was stated.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll go ahead and finish my comments and then. I also wanted to say that during the G-PAC, I personally requested additional meetings for the plan driver of the land use designations with the intent to expand the opportunity for input. And we did have a lot of rigorous discussion and opinions were all recorded. In the future, if, since the, one of the meetings did not get recorded, we do have difficulty in the community room with the mics and recording and video and that sort of thing. And that's just indicative of the room that was used, because that was, that's typically how G-PAC meetings are. They're more in a casual setting. We thought it would be better to be on the same, instead of us up here and everyone else down there, we thought it'd be better, everybody in the same room. However, we can suggest to have a future G-PAC meeting in council chambers. We can see if that's plausible, so that everything can be recorded, but it definitely is going to be a different feel. You know, we're not, there's not tables, we're going to have to put tables, but it's going to be kind of crowded. So I just want to offer that we're, I am, and the consultant team and the community development is very invested in making sure that everybody's voices are heard. And the city attorney, I wanted to ask you about, if you can respond to, what is the charter responsibility as far as directing staff and as far as council members and the city management and staff? Can you please clarify that?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Brown, the city charter does prohibit city council members from directing staff on any item within the purview of the city manager. So the city council's sole interaction, or at least directions, should go to the city manager, not to city staff. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. And I also wanted to ask, or you can correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, that the heat maps that were presented that appear to be pre-selected were based upon online community surveys, correct?
There's two points to make. One is that the heat map, which I showed of mixed use in the lower right-hand corner, came from a community online survey. Community members were given the opportunity to place a dot anywhere they wanted on the map. They could have put it in the hillside in open space, it didn't matter. So they could put it anywhere and that was the location that they chose to put it. The areas of discussion occurred over about a six-month period, based on public input at the first public workshop, at pop-up workshops, based on that survey, and then based on discussions with the General Plan Advisory Committee. And the General Plan Advisory Committee ultimately decided on which areas to look at.
Right. And once, so that online survey occurred prior to the G-PAC having their discussion, correct?
Correct.
And that is the reason why you were able to provide the heat map at the land use designation conversation, because it was informing the discussion that we were, as an advisory committee, were going to have?
Correct.
Thank you. And was there more input and engagement than the previous plan this time? So in other words, the last general plan, I don't know if they had a thousand, two thousand, whatever, and we had input. Do you happen to have that data? If not, that's fine.
I don't have the data.
Okay. And affordable housing is needed to support the ideals our council protocols establish, especially since we did approve new positions in the city of Ventura, a lot of them. And in order for us to remain competitive, we must plan for housing to support a future workforce. Because what's been happening is when we try to hire an engineer, which is a basic position, they may want the job, but they choose not to move here because they can't find the housing. And so we're not talking about housing for, we're not saying that all the housing needs to be for one specific income type. We're saying we need to have a cross-section of affordable housing for all different types, so seniors, veterans, you know, starter families, you know, new families, single people who are coming here, starting their career, high school graduates, college graduates who are returning after receiving their degrees. These are all different types of housing that we need, and I think that's, I think that needs to be said, so it's not necessarily that we're inviting persons from outside the community in, but that we are trying to build housing to support the residents that are here, already here. And the last thing I'm going to say, and I'll allow my colleagues to have comments, is that, a little bit about SCAG. So as a delegate to the Southern California Associations of Governments, I just wanted to state that we benefit in many ways from the relationship with that entity. And Ventura is one of the founding cities of that organization. And if the city of Ventura, twenty years plus ago, saw the benefit of being within, having that relationship, then I think it's important that we stay on the same path. I also wanted to kind of give, let everyone know that if we actually did, say, pull out from SCAG and be a part of the MPO with SLOW, which is San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara, it would actually result in the city of Ventura being allocated more housing, not less. And I think you guys need to understand that, like, us moving is not going to solve some sort of problem that is thought that we have. Because we're a sm-. Because we're a smaller city in comparison to Los Angeles, we're allocated less housing. So if the point of trying to change, remove ourselves from SCAG and move over to San Luis Obispo County and Santa Barbara County is to decrease housing, it would actually have the opposite effect. So I just wanted to make sure that that was stated in order for us to have an informed conversation based upon the facts. So I'll allow my colleagues to have the floor now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Now we have Councilmember Holter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to say, I wanted to apologize for using my question time for making some comments. But for the year and a half that I've sat on this council, I would say at least 50% of the time, my colleagues have done exactly the same thing. And so I think we've had enough leeway to do so. But I do apologize because I do understand the protocol. Unfortunately, sometimes it's important to say what you need to say when you're at a certain time. In this case, I understand the point that Councilmember Johnson was trying to make about staff not following recommendations or decisions by previous councils or from this council, okay? What I disagree with is the disrespectful way of asking questions. And when you ask a question, and I don't care if it's on this council, if it's one-on-one or in a group of friends, you need to have the decency to allow that person to answer it. And when I hear that happening, and they ask a question, we're not prosecutors up here, we're decision makers. We're part of a community, we're serving a role. So I don't feel I was disrespecting my colleague at all. I was trying to make sure that we're working on the same side and that we're focused on the issue at hand. And one of the comments made by one of the speakers, the name is George, about being prepared to take a lot of pride in spending a large part of my time, far more time than most council members I've seen in 36 years, due to prepare to be here. So I was prepared to be here to hear an update on these things, not to question whether or not city council should have made a decision three years ago. Okay, so with that out, I'll say this, is that the fact that when I hear things, two things. First, on the energy, climate change or Climate Action Plan and Energy Action Plan is, to say that we've done nothing is BS. It doesn't take a plan to know to change a light bulb to LED. It doesn't take a plan to know that solar, where we could put solar is a good idea. It doesn't take a plan to say, hey, we need to buy a new fleet of vehicles. Maybe we should look at hybrids or electric vehicles. I think we're all smart enough to do that, okay? So to say we have done nothing is BS, okay? So do I think a plan is appropriate? Do I think a plan is more meaningful in the sense that we could track it? We could actually show by encouraging every new home to have those energy-rated windows that cost them $20,000 more to put into their houses? That raises that housing cost even more in a climate that has, that ranges from 65 to 80 degrees year-round? But we saved a certain amount of energy by doing that? Yeah, we could track that. We could track that by saying we built 1,500 homes that now have these new windows in it, and the temperature variation was X, and we saved this much energy by doing that, okay? So if it's all about tracking the good we do, then that's great. But I'm here to get something done, okay? I'm here to get, make sure that we go down the right path and that we, climate change to me is very real. I think it's a huge emergency. But I got to tell you, you know what you don't hear about on the news? You know, what you don't hear people talking about? The hundreds of thousands of people that are being slaughtered over in Ukraine? How far back is that setting down our climate initiative, okay? How many more solar panels are we going to have to put up for the next, you know, dozen missiles that country drops on an innocent country? When are we going to talk about those real things? When are we going to talk about, you know, we're here splitting hairs and trying to figure out how to, you know, how I should have every one of my lawn mowers electric? When we have things like that happening across the world? Yes, it all adds up to something real, and I get that. But you know, it really is hypocritical when we're saying we're not doing anything. We're advancing our technology. We're all buying our LED batteries. We're all trying to do the right thing. And yes, a plan would really help. And I support the update that staff was giving us tonight. And I'm sorry it didn't happen earlier, okay? From what I've heard, I guess it's been around longer than I thought, okay? But one of my forties is when it comes to building, and I want to get to that, is when it comes to affordable housing, I heard at least three people say it tonight about, well, but do we really create that many houses? The "we" again is not this room, is not this government. The people who build houses are the private sector, okay? Other than our housing authority, which is doing a fantastic job at trying to provide some affordable housing. The answer to affordable housing, that's the small piece of that answer. It can't be the whole piece because when it costs $620,000 to build an affordable unit, we're all go broke and be living in teepees again if that is the only answer to affordable housing. The answer to affordable housing should have been looked at decades ago when we made this mess, okay? But we're looking at it now, okay? And the real answer is we all know that the unhoused, people living on the streets in our parks, is absolutely wrong. It's not in anybody's best interest that that's going on. And whether you have your own house and you live in the community or people have to live out there and, God forbid, use the restroom wherever they can in the embarrassment or the disconnect with their community, not to mention the unhealthy environment that creates for everyone else. The fact is, it should never have happened. We're smarter than that, we're more compassionate than that. We should be providing the facilities to help people with mental health issues, the facilities to help people who have substance issues, and to do things to help those who simply are down on their luck and need to leg up. We're all on this planet for one very short period of time. And the best thing we could do is use our God-given, unique talents to help make somebody else's lives better. And I think what I would like to see, in summary, whether it's about energy or about housing, I would like to see the transition plan. The transition plan to get people off the street. I don't want to hear the same thing I've heard for 30 years. That was my biggest disappointment getting back on the council. Or getting on the council is hearing the same thing we talked about in the 90s about people who are unhoused. So let's have a real, true transition plan. How do we get them off the street? What's our barriers? What laws need to change? What policies need to change? I do not believe it's all about money, but money is a part of it, okay? Same thing with energy. I don't want to say that, you know, yeah, we're going to put in these energy-efficient windows, and we can change these light bulbs out, and we're going to upgrade these cars, and we're going to get off gas and let, not renew something for a gas plant. Without first knowing where we're going to get the energy? Do we have a grid capable of providing the energy we need? The electricity that we need? And if we don't, let's make sure we do. Make sure we have a grid that is using renewable energy sources to have the grid powerful enough to power all electric homes. I believe in that. But I don't believe in turning that light switch and saying, you can't have gas, you can't have that vehicle. So I think that's what I see missing most of the time, is the lack of a transition plan. I think most people are logical and good people. And we would want to do our part to be a part of that transition plan. But we need to make sure it's vetted and that we really do have the best interests in mind. I think too many times, as I mentioned one comment about what's happened since the fire is, with Edison shutting off the electricity on the hillside, we could, too many, more than I could count, people have put in generators to make sure they have electricity for their Thanksgiving dinner or for that, to keep their refrigerator going. And guess what? Those generators are diesel. That's going backwards. So by God, I hope this Climate Action Plan and our Energy Action Plan incorporate all those little things that all add up to big things. But in the meantime, I believe that we need to move forward with completing our general plan and completing these plans and vetting them and providing a draft as soon as possible. And finally, when it comes to affordability, I challenge every one of us to understand why we're not seeing affordable housing being built, okay? We think it's a big, bad developer out there? You think they're making 30%? You think they're making tens of millions of dollars on every development? You know, if they're making 8%, it's probably a really good project. The risk factor is huge for these people. It's because of the process that we all define for them. So let's fix the process, reduce the waste, encourage good projects that resemble our neighborhoods and add to our historical ambiance that we love, and provide a variety of housing for all economic levels to live here. That's what it's about. It's not about saying those people should be creating this affordable housing when we have codes that says it's going to cost $7 million per unit to build it. Bottom line, that's it. I support staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Councilmember Holter. And now we have Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Holter set it off for me. I did just want to remind, I think, I think the process is helpful for me when I meet with staff prior to these big presentations on council. It's always easier to be able to ask a question and then just kind of sit with you and have a conversation. So I don't know if that, in the future, could be something that we could do when you come back or for the next type of presentation. But that's always helpful to me because I do appreciate staff's time and effort in bringing these presentations, whether they are just receive and file or you're asking a question, a motion from council. I appreciate staff's input. And I think we often forget that staff is a part of this process, a big part of the process. We as council members are not experts on every subject, and we as council members don't have the answers to everything. So to, I think you used the word prosecutor, to prosecute staff from the DIAS, to me, is very inappropriate. Not because it's, not because maybe they're right and staff is wrong, but just simply, that is not how we, as leaders, as public officials, should be handling our business, period. And for me, it's a bit embarrassing to have to go through that dialogue and to have to go through and sit here once again, having to go through that type of action with staff. So on my behalf, and on, you know, me personally, I apologize for that because I don't think staff should have to sit here through that. There's different ways of handling it. And so with that, I, again, appreciate staff's effort in putting a report together for us. I remind both public and us here on the DIAS that staff is sometimes more the expert than us. And maybe they are not going to have all the answers we want to hear or all the answers we want to, you know, think that they're correct or wrong. But let's have a little bit of respect in that they put a lot of time and effort in this as well. So as much as we have to sit here and hear and listen, they have also done their part as well. So just wanted to acknowledge that and say that to you. Thank you, that is all.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios. And I also want to give Mr. Gilli the opportunity to share a little bit more information about electrification and those types of things.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. When the community, when the organization came forward to council to talk about the topic, I don't remember the exact date. I think it's been mentioned about the need for us to look at that as a rule and a policy. I did prepare an email and sent it to council to give some background information about how, due to a variety of factors, one being that the building codes, the state building codes are changing, and at the January of 2023, there will be new building codes. So whatever reach code you do is always something that goes beyond state building code. Well, we should check and see what building code's going to change first. Also, we, in that email noted, we're coming with this item, where we're going to be talking about the big picture. And I believe we did clearly state in the presentation that an all-electric reach code is very possible to be in the CARP. So just wanted to convey that the email that was referred to that may have said why immediate adoption might not be the best approach, just make it very clear that it was not a discouragement of the consideration of the topic. And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to provide that for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli, for offering that information. I think the more information that we have, the better. And that way, we all understand where we are at. Do we have any additional comments for this item? All right, no additional comments. I just want to thank staff and Matt Ramey and team for all of the work that has gone into this. We really appreciate all of the long nights and long days that you all have spent to make sure that we have this information. So thank you very much, and we look forward to continuing the work. And so with that, I think we are ready to take a motion.
So move the recommendations A and B?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. And so with that, we can proceed with the vote.
On item 13A, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Holter?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schrader?
Yes.
And Mayor Rubicava?
Yes.
Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. All right, and so our next item is public communications. Do we have any public communications?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have not received any additional speaker cards for public communications.
All right, thank you very much. And so with that, we move to adjournment. So thank you, everybody, for attending this meeting. Thank you for all of the information and the input. And we hope to see you at the next meeting on the 25th. This meeting is adjourned.